Good evening. Call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming. And for those of you who are watching, Mr. Blaylock won't be with us tonight. Please join staff and council in wishing him a speedy recovery. Mr. Martin, will you help us with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather in fellowship. We also ask that you watch over Councilmember Blaylock and his family. Be with them, Lord. Protect them. Comfort them. Get Charlie to a speedy recovery so we can see him back here and help us with these critical decisions going forward. Lord, I ask for you to pass down your wisdom and your knowledge. Help us provide a journey forward for the community. Help us add value for the taxpayers. Lord, I ask that you watch over all first responders this evening and going forward. They are important members of our community. As they watch over us, you watch over them. God, we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Mayor, I have one, please.
Yes.
We need to add a letter of consent to the Corps of Engineers, a letter of intent, I'm sorry, to the Corps of Engineers to do the consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you. And if that's the only one, do I have a motion to...
Mayor?
Yep.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Were we going to address, under Old Business, item 5 dot 4? I still see a list of some items there. I thought we were pulling back on some of those items this evening, like the disclosure of interest statement. Weren't we removing that?
Yes, I was going to pull that when we get to that point.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, we can pull that now if you'd like as we pass it. It's...
That's fine. Do we need a motion? Or is that an agenda change?
That would be an amendment to the agenda.
Okay.
So a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So what we're discussing is the last item in Old Business, 5.4, page 112. There are a number of documents that council is considering for committees and boards, policy and procedures. And I wish to pull the disclosure of interest statement, the third one listed there on the agenda. So with those adjustments, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that the agenda be adjusted per the two items discussed.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Eads.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So let's move on then to public comment.
Yes, ma'am. I have Mariah Brazil. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mariah Brazil, 113 Southeast 15th Street. Y'all, I've just spent the last six days in the hospital with a non-contagious condition and had to argue with my doctors to get out today to come talk to you tonight. As a result, please forgive my rudeness because as soon as my comments and my driver's comments are over, we need to take off. I first want to say that I'm so grateful for council's willingness to navigate this island's unique situation. Everyone who lives here knows that paid parking is coming, but we are not like other locations that have paid parking. I believe there is still time to address some of the quirky issues that we face. There is a plethora of issues regarding row parking that can be headed off now. I realize that paid parking is a work in progress that we will adapt to. However, row parking north of the Davis Canal is causing the most angst. I am here to urgently plead with you to reconsider your ban on row parking islandwide. There are multiple families and multiple businesses who depend upon right-of-way parking. It's been this way for decades, and our locals have designed their lives and their businesses around what has been allowed for so long. Please think about people who ride together for any number of reasons. Society tells us to carpool whenever possible to reduce our carbon footprint. There are multiple families on the island who carpool to work in Wilmington and other locales. Lots of these driveways are too narrow or too short for additional vehicles to park in the driveway. Let's think about charter boat captains. I'm not talking about blocking the street ends with boats. I'm speaking of the charter captain who brings their boat home to prepare for a trip the next day. Consider yard sales, a small matter to some folks, but yard sales can be the difference between making extra income and useful items going into the landfill. If row parking is completely eliminated, won't yard sales be as well? Open houses? Realtors depend upon open houses to show homes. As people come and go at different times, parking in a driveway is not practical. Baby showers, birthday parties, bridal showers, gatherings after funerals. Where would these people park if row parking is eliminated? Do we really want people to be forced to go to town hall to ask for permission to park in the row when they're already grieving a loved one? I implore you to think carefully about this issue. Please reconsider your decision to eliminate row parking islandwide. Surely, there's a compromise that can be made. Perhaps you would be willing to consider allowing the property owner to choose whom they wish to park on the row. Perhaps there's another solution. Y'all are some pretty smart cookies. Let's come up with a viable solution that will benefit us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Landers?
My name's Catherine Landers. I live at 1407 East Oak Island Drive. I am here to request that you reconsider your decision to ban row parking islandwide. I have tried to come up with a solution to my problem of a small, short driveway, but I am at a loss. Ordinance states that I cannot put in a second driveway as I am on a corner lot facing Oak Island Drive. To be able to park in my front yard, I would have to remove four large live oak trees and multiple other trees. None of us want this. To park in my backyard, I would have to remove my fence. Not to mention, as co-owner of a charter business, I have nowhere to park to charge my batteries or prepare the boat for my upcoming charters. What happens when my children come to visit? Do they have to go pay $20 a day for parking and be shuttled to my home? Please reconsider allowing row parking north of the Davis Canal. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Laura Morgan. I reside at 41 Park Circle in Bluffton, South Carolina. And I'm here to talk to y'all tonight about a wonderful event we're bringing here to Oak Island in October called Pledge the Pink. I do have some information. I will leave with Rose so that you can read about it a little bit later on your own time. But we are absolutely thrilled to be bringing this event up to Oak Island during the shoulder season. The dates are October 19th through the 22nd. And 1,500 registrants, literally from around the world, come to our event every year. This is our 13th year. We've never left South Carolina before. But South Carolina no longer has a shoulder season. No, certainly does not have an off-season. And with a master's in economic development, having spent 20 years with local government, I understand how important that is. And that's one of the reasons I created this event. So we searched out high and low, and fortunately, we found your wonderful community. And I can tell you right now, I have never, ever, 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 21 years in local government, 13 years doing this, have never seen such a wonderful, welcoming, beautiful community in my life. Y'all are very fortunate, and y'all are incredibly wonderful people. Pledge the Pink has been around, as I said, since 2010. This is our 13th year. We have raised a little over $2 million. Charities, we typically fund about 50 to 100 charities a year. This year, our fundraising goal is $750,000. So we're pretty big. In addition to the 1,500 people that will be coming here, several hundred friends, family, supporters, volunteers, and some of our staff, unpaid staff, will be in town as well. So it's around 2,000 people. Majority of the houses have already been rented, and I can tell you that 99% of the golf carts between Myrtle Beach and Wilmington have already been rented. With your help, we also hope to take back a Guinness World Record that we started many years ago. We have the world's largest pink garden flamingo flock. And it has been stolen from us twice by some individuals in Buffalo, New York, who don't know who they're dealing with. So we're taking back our record this year. And with our goal of $750,000 in fundraising, we will put out 7,500 flamingos in Middleton Park. Each flamingo represents $100 that has been raised. And so if we hit our goal, it'll be 7,500 flamingos out there. As I said, the event will be headquartered at Middleton. We have worked with staff tirelessly over these last months to get the routes approved. I'm happy to tell you that no streets will be closed. Let me repeat that. No streets will be closed. The event officially starts with a packet pickup party on Thursday night at Middleton from 3:00 to 8:00. And then Friday morning, Saturday morning, we have 8:00 starts, and we do 10-mile courses each day. And then on Sunday, we're going to start at 7:30 in the morning, and that's a half-marathon course. So they'll be doing 33.1 miles over three days. We have 43 states already registered, and as of this afternoon, seven countries are coming as well. We are so proud to be bringing this event to town, and I just really wanted to take some time. We drove up here a few days ago. It was really important for us that we let y'all know what's coming. And we have talked to so many businesses, so many organizations, so many partners, so many residents that are supporting us. And we look forward to working with y'all as well. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer. I will leave information also with Rose so you can have that to review. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Terry, excuse me, Terry Carter?
My name is Terry Carter. I reside at 101 Southwest 23rd Street. Before my three minutes begins, I'm just wondering if the lady who just spoke is interested in an economic development job. I understand we need an economic developer. I first spoke to you all about the beach management plan at your October 4 special meeting and public hearing. At that time, I suggested that the timeline for moving through the process was too rushed. The material was complicated. I asked the town to take the time to get information about the BMP out to the taxpayers in a form that we stakeholders understand. Tonight, I'm reiterating the same concerns I expressed on October 4. The minutes from that meeting reflect that Counselor Bach's opinion was that the town needed to do more due diligence and potentially receive additional public comments. The council did approve a 100-day deferment on that plan. Counselor Bell suggested that waiting 100 days would allow for another public hearing. Mr. Kelly agreed that another public hearing could be held. To my knowledge, no additional information has been provided to taxpayers. No additional meetings have been held, including another public hearing. And yet, this matter is before you tonight to be passed. Again, I say to you, this is a very complicated plan. It's not light reading. It's not easy to understand as a layperson. And it has long and far-reaching impacts on the town of Oak Island for many decades to come. There are lots of questions that are not answered. There are lots of information that's not been disseminated. Just to give you an example, give us residents an idea of how many houses on the beachfront were non-compliant before the August 1 development line was changed. I contend that this didn't become an emergency overnight. We have spent decades not managing our beach in a responsible way. Show us a timeline for how this beach management plan is going to work. Tell us the risks and benefits of this plan. What happens if we do it? What happens if we don't? Educate us on what is a federal beach? What is an engineered beach? Talk to us about the successes and failures of the terminal groin down at Ocean Isle Beach. We don't have that information. And even go so far as to consider forming a coastline commission or a coastline advisory group. If pushing this thing through tonight is about the $10,000 grant that was given to us to assist in formulating this beach management plan, then I suggest we either ask for an extension or we give the money back. $10,000 is a drop in the bucket compared to the overall cost of this plan. Tonight, I'm telling you that I don't think the town has fulfilled its obligation to be transparent with the residents and taxpayers by helping us fully understand this issue. So I ask you tonight, please do not advance this item at this time. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Town Council, fellow citizens. Good evening. I've talked to many people over the last couple of months concerning right-of-way parking. In these conversations, I've been told how much many depend on the right-of-way parking. People on the west end of the island would need to remove trees to accommodate additional parking. Some also have business vehicles and will lose a place to park them. On northeast and southeast streets, many have teenage children and need places to park their vehicles as well as their business vehicles. People I spoke with in Yopon have lived here since the '70s. No one, they do not know that they've ever parked in the right-of-way in front of their house. They've never had a problem. I believe the solution is clear. Allow residents to park in the right-of-way with a placard or some type of placard. Or allow residents to monitor the right-of-way in front of their homes and report violations of non-residents parking in the right-of-way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Scott Stevenson?
Good evening, council and mayor. Number one, thank you for your service. We truly appreciate you and everything that you do for this town. I'm here tonight to talk about right-of-way parking, like most folks. But I'm looking at it from a different perspective. I'm looking at it as a permanent resident here. I'm looking at it knowing that many times during the season, I have to rely on that right-of-way parking to be able to access the beach. I rely on the right-of-way parking north of Oak Island Drive for get-togethers, for barbecues, for birthday parties, for graduation parties. My big concern is for the businesses here on Oak Island that thrive and survive on tourism. Was there any study that was done to indicate how many tourist dollars are associated with a car that parks for beach access? If not, there should have been. We have businesses that need those dollars. I looked around. Yes, we are part of a ever-growing chain of communities in the southeast of North Carolina that are going to have to go to paid parking. But we cut too far, way too far. How many of those paid parking right-of-ways, or how many of those right-of-way parking near the beach are used by residents? How many of those paid parking spots are going to be used by residents? Are we going to generate the income and revenue that you expect? Or is it going to be all free parking for residents because there's nowhere else to park? As far as north of Davis Canal, and I live, I'm sorry, I live Northwest First Street, 103 Northwest First Street. I see the line of LTVs going down First Street because we're the closest access for the west end. That's the only access we have, is First Street and Middleton Drive. If you go west, people would have to pack up their stuff and go across Davis Canal to get to the beach. I don't see that there's a need for a ban of right-of-way parking, particularly on the northwest side of the island. And I would ask you to reconsider. But I would also ask you to reconsider the right-of-way parking near the beach because I believe we are going to lose businesses on this island because they're not going to be able to survive. Thank you.
Richard Morrison?
Good evening. I live on 146 Northeast 3rd, also in the wooded north section, and I'd like to speak of right-of-way parking. I know some friends who have a gravel parking pad that is in the right-of-way. That's the only parking they have. Again, they would have to take down trees, live oaks, that sort of thing. What I did discover, though, is I went and said, "What's recorded on my deed?" There is no right-of-way on my deed. So I said, "Where is this right-of-way?" And I looked at a survey, and the survey says the town of Oak Island has 60 feet of right-of-way. That's 20 feet of road, 20 feet of my front yard, and 20 feet of the neighbor's front yard. Lo and behold, it's not my front yard. It's y'all's. Why have I been mowing this all of these years? Are you prepared to service your 20 feet of road on either side? Because if you're not going to let us park on it, you're going to have to mow it. That's just part of it. As it is, I love boating. I take my boat. I go to the boat ramp. I park my boat and trailer in the ramp. Many times, there's not enough room. There's what, 25 spaces there? There's a lot more boats on Oak Island than that. We were forced to park on the right-of-way at the 55th Boat Ramp, which according to tonight, before I came to this meeting, is not included in paid parking, but yet paid parking signs are up at the 55th Boat Ramp. No parking signs have been erected along the right-of-way of this boat ramp. We will not have anywhere to park our boats and trailers to be able to enjoy the water that's out here. That is a severe problem. Some other folks that I know of is, since I don't own the 20 feet in front of my property, my driveway is simply a connector. Is that illegal for me to park in the front 20 feet of my driveway since it's in the right-of-way? Am I going to get a $50 ticket for that? So this is the right-of-way discussion that everybody is worried about, that trying to prevent people from parking in front of people's homes so that you can force them to buy beach parking is one thing. But forcing the rest of us on this island that moved here because this is a place to live. I chose here because this is a great family place, a place to own a home, play in the water. Oh, by the way, it happens to have a beach. It's not like other beach towns where it's just beach. This is a residence area. And you have shot us all in the foot by telling us we can't use the front 20 feet of our property to park our boats, our vehicles. I've already seen people get letters. This is just not right. I mean, I can't park mine there either. So that's what I would like for y'all to consider, is to give us back our ability to park in front of our own homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Danny Thompson. I live at 235 Northeast 64th Street, and I'm here to talk about paid parking also. Specifically, I'd like to talk about Southeast 64th Street because that's the beach access that's close to my house, and that's what's going to affect me and my neighbors the most. I missed a meeting last month, or on March 2, where they addressed some paid parking because I was out of town. I did submit some questions to the clerk through the town's website, but I never got an answer, so that's why I'm here tonight. Southeast 64th Street has about 1,000 feet of right-of-way, which takes up and includes a whole block. There are two houses on the block. One of them is at the northwest corner. The other one's at the southeast corner. The rest of the street is salt ponds. And so the right-of-way butts up against the salt ponds, except for the house on the north end does have lawn that's attached to the right-of-way. The house on the south end also has some property that butts up against the right-of-way, and they do maintain that property. The rest of their property, as far as I can tell, along the salt ponds are maintained by the city. As much as they maintain them, they cut the grass. In the past, we had eight parking spaces that were designated on Southeast 64th Street, which isn't a lot. But with all that right-of-way, we could park 30 to 40 vehicles in there from our neighbors because most of them were golf carts, a lot of them were day trippers. But there was enough right-of-way to get the cars in there. When this all came about and I realized they were going to cancel or prohibit right-of-way parking, I realized we were no longer going to have space to park. 64th Street has an access. 65th Street does not. 66th Street does not. So our access was getting quite a bit of activity. I did email the town manager and request that they look at 64th Street for adding additional parking. That was back in January. At that time, I think his response was that they weren't going to do anything at that time, but they would be looking into it. As of now, somebody looked into it because they removed one of the spaces we had. Now we're down to seven parking spaces. So it's really going to limit how we get to the beach. You know, I'm 70-some years old. My wife is. We usually go to the beach four or five times a week. During season, we're not going to have that access. I just think it needs to be reconsidered, how you're going to look at that. One of the answers may be providing golf cart parking, which takes up a lot less space. There may be some other answers where they can put parking in the right-of-way. I don't know. I don't know what the criteria is. But those are my concerns, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Bodenheimer?
I'm David Bodenheimer at 5119 Minnesota Drive, 3001 West Beach and 3321 West Beach. My comments tonight relate to the beach development plan. When I testified about this on October 4 last year, I said that the draft plan, which the council had received in a presentation a week before, was a plan that was too hasty, too risky, and too costly. Regarding the haste, I thank Councilman Bach for his motion and the council's vote to add 100 days to consider this and provide sufficient time for due diligence. Regarding the risk, I addressed those in my written comments October 4. I understand that the town had a very positive meeting with the CRC, that the CRC wants a plan, not an unreasonable plan, but they're willing to work with us. And I trust that this addressed most of the risks. Finally, on the cost, at that time, there was not a price tag on the draft beach development plan from Moffett Nickel. When I had... When I'd ask on the side, "What's it going to cost? When are we going to see the numbers?", they said, "Well, you know, we're not economists." I said, "Well, do you know what the price is?" And, you know, "We just went through this with the $140 million FEMA-engineered beach." And they said, "Well, it's going to cost about that much." I trust that the cost issue has been fully considered by the council, and, you know, those issues are within our budget and the ability of the community to support. So I leave it in your hands. I hope that we're not looking at a $140 million plan, but instead, a plan that will fit within our budget over the 30-year period. I know you're dealing with a lot of hard issues, and I appreciate all the due diligence and time that you have put into them. Thank you.
Thank you.[659.48][659.48](APPLAUSE). Dural Gilbert.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council members. My name is Dural Gilbert. My wife, Tricia, and I reside at 5423 West Beach. I am speaking tonight in support of the town's adoption of the beach management plan as prepared by Moffett and Nichols. I know that several folks have probably given you all the benefits, pros and cons, but I want to make sure that one constituent is not left out of this discussion, and that constituent is really the homeowners who own beach property. And so imagine on August 1st, without you knowing about it, you heard that there's a new CRC mandate, that now that there's no more development line, and now you have a static vegetation line that's from 1998 that's been imposed. And without you knowing it, because we didn't really find out about it until October, those homes were either deemed, many of them were non-conforming, which means some portion of the home exceeded that 60-foot setback, or they were, at worst, they were non-rebuildable. Many homeowners, and we know all along East Beach, there were blank, empty lots, and within a matter of probably two and a half years, those homes were purchased. And then the next day, on August 1st, those people could no longer rebuild their home if they sustained that damage. I want us to remember the property owner, because they really have few options, if we think about it. One, they can't do anything to substantially re-fortify their home. One example I want you to know is a resident and her husband, and they approached the town, sat down with the town. They wanted to put up hurricane windows, and they wanted to re-side their cottage so that it would be better prepared to withstand hurricanes. The cost of those two things exceeded the 49% limitation that they could spend, given the appraisal of their home. So they could not even re-fortify their home to withstand the hurricane, because it exceeded the 49%. They ended up having to go on their own, get another appraisal, come back, and then present that back to the town, so that appraisal would give them the room for that 49% improvement. This was not building a new deck, it was not building a second floor, this was not, you know, doing those types of things. This was fortifying their home. And we need to remember the number of cottages and homes that are 30 and 40 years old, and they're not built to the current hurricane standards. And those homes are now, with damage, non-rebuildable or non-conforming to the degree where it would almost be cost-prohibitive to rebuild that home. So what does a homeowner do? Do they sell it for cash at a deep discount? Do they sell it to somebody who is going to get a mortgage? Because very few mortgage lenders are going to underwrite a home that does not have the value, where they don't have short value of the collateral. What's going to happen to this town is those homes are going to be sold, people are going to exit, they're going to sell those homes at less than they would otherwise, and this town is going to turn into a rental jungle. People won't live here, retirees will not move here when they don't know that they can stay in their home, young families will not move here to live on the beach when they know that that beach home can't survive. A storm, a fire, a tornado, any of those. So I do want us to think about those homeowners that through no fault of their own...
Mayor.
...ended up...
I was waiting for it to go to zero. Oh, it gets stuck on...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was waiting for it to beat two. I apologize.
Yeah, it's getting stuck on one.
That's right. That's right. I appreciate you considering those people who are not here to speak tonight, because they are extremely impacted and at no fault of their own. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.[895.48][895.48](APPLAUSE). Barry Gallop.
Hi, all. Barry Gallop, 6615 West Beach. A beach management plan. With the majority of coastal towns having a plan, it really begs the question, why don't we already have one? According to the Moffett and Nichols document attached to the agenda that's here with this agenda, the town has had the plan in place and ready to go since 2016, when it finalized the comprehensive shoreline management plan. So why has it taken so long to get to a vote? Simple answer: money. The fear has been that committing to a 30-year plan and how to pay for it, and that discussion has been going on since we bought our house in 2013, with the major question being, can we afford this? As presented by Moffett and Nichols, the answer's clear: we can't afford not to do The job of this town council is to protect its citizens, all of the citizens. As Dural said, there's 800 beachfront homeowners. But to be clear, this plan will benefit everybody. Those that rent, I don't, by the way, those who enjoy the beach with friends and family, and those who want increased property values, more retail establishments, to enjoy, and the like. Let's understand something that everybody already understands. People don't come here to go to the water park, Earth Day, or an Easter egg hunt. They come here for the beach. And thus, we need to maintain the beach, as it is the economic driving force of the town. And for many, it's their nest egg. And as for the money, we can afford the plan. The Moffett and Nichols Beach Management Plan outlines the funds available to the town to pay for the beach renourishment plan. 3.5 million a year is generated from the occupancy tax, and it's rising as rental costs rise. One and a half to 2 million a year is generated from the local sand tax, and this number surely will rise, given that the new tax value assessments we just received, mine doubled, many peoples here have already doubled. And there's other money available. I also understand now that the core, we're doing a core thing where we could get 35% of it, is all we would have to pay if we get approval from the core to be under their program. So with a plan to maintain the beach every six years, even with this 5 million that I just outlined, that comes to us, and it's only for beach renourishment, that gives us $30 million every time we need to do a nourishment plan. It's also worth noting that the massive increase in the tax assessment of the beachfront homes, if you wipe out those homes, that is going to be a major hit to the Oak Island citizens, because a lot of the tax revenue from those 800 homes affords this town to have, you know, very good stuff happening, and that would be severely diminished. And importantly, this plan does not lock us into 30 years, if there's no need. We have the 2024-25 nourishment plan, which is already paid for, and then in 2030, we can again consider our options. So now, voting yes is just simply protecting the citizens from, and turns out that the town is thriving metropolis. I'm out of time. Basically, my view is, we should vote yes and get it over with, and vote on the beach management plan.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.[1123.16][1123.16](APPLAUSE).
Carl Thomason.
Good evening. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak here tonight. Deana and I first, when I'm speaking about the beach management plan, 4005 East Beach is our address. Deana, my wife, who you'll listen to here in a few minutes, we first purchased the property in the Woodlands in 2016. Over the following five years, we have come to embrace everything that the island had to offer. So in 2021, we decided that we were going to make Oak Island our full-time residence. We went under contract on a property a year later. We closed on that property in October of '22, and we moved into our house. What happened between October of '21 and October of '22 is the CRC came in and issued their mandate. And when we found that out in early August, we immediately went into discovery mode to figure out, what did this mean to us? How was it going to impact anybody who owned a property on the beachfront? After talking with several people, a few of you who are sitting there in front of me, we learned that a lot of smart people were addressing the issue, and that we would be okay, not that anybody told us this, but we felt like we would be okay to take the risk, go ahead and close on our property, because we could tell that the adoption of a beach management plan that would then be accepted by the CRC was imminent. So you fast-forward to where we are now, and we think, why do we need the beach? Well, obviously, the beach serves as the draw, not only for visitors, but also future residents. But let's face it, the beach acts as a long-term catalyst for economic growth and success of all the Oak Island small business owners. Without the beach, they don't have a business. As we think about what it means to let the beach go where the beach wants to go, that came up in several conversations that I had. Let's let Mother Nature run its course, let the beach go where it wants to go. That, several years ago, was a viable option, no doubt about it. But when we think today about your predecessors, and the burden that they left you with, having decided several years ago that it would be okay to develop the beachfront like we see it now, I don't think we have any choice but to consider some form of beach management plan. You could say that the groundwork was laid then, whether we have the CRC or not, coming in and telling us what we need to do, that some form of beach management plan would have to be adopted. So where am I going with this? You have to understand that when you say no to something, you're saying yes to something else. So if we say no to a beach management plan, it seems to me that we're saying yes to a lot of lost tax revenue, because there's probably 500 owners or property owners along the beach that will petition the county for lower taxes. That will be a significant loss in revenue. That's going to have to be made up in one of two ways. Those lost taxes are either passed on to folks who own property inland, or we have to reduce the spending budget for the town, which could result in lost jobs, lost services, et cetera. So we must all realize, beach management plan benefits all of us, not just the property owners. With that, thank you. My time is up. Appreciate all you do for us.
Thank you very much.[1348.65][1348.65](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. I'm Deana Thomason, and I also live at 4005 East Beach. Carl and I recently decided to make Oak Island our permanent residence, partially because of the beautiful beach, but also equally because of the caring people. I was in the post office the other day, and I was filling out a form to get a new post office box, and a lady walked by and saw me, and she's like, "Oh, you're new. Welcome to the island." And I just had never had that before, so it just feels so natural being here. People here truly care about each other. Most of us here tonight didn't grow up here, but we chose to move here, a lot because of the beach and because of the wonderful people. People here genuinely care about each other. We currently have over 500 families that are at risk of losing their homes. So I ask you, please pass the beach management plan tonight. It would be an easy thing to say, "Let's delay. Let's delay and move on to other issues." But we have 500 families that are at risk of losing their home. With the Oak Island that I've come to know, when a neighbor is in trouble, we don't say, "Let's delay." We say, "How can we help?" Thank you.[1458.51][1458.51](APPLAUSE).
Andy Spradley.
My name's Andy Spradley, 114 Southeast 6th Street. I am here for the Oak Island Beach Preservation. First, our auction is coming up, so I'd just like to give a quick reminder to you that our first in-person silent auction and wine tasting in two years is finally coming up. So this is on April 8th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at 801 Ocean Events Center. We are really looking forward to seeing our families, our friends, our fellow citizens come to this. It'll be really nice to see each other in person after the pestilence has lost our shores. It's caused quite a bit of problems for us. We have not been able to do something like this for quite a while, and this was our big fundraiser for the beach preservation. Tickets are going fast, but you can still purchase tickets. One, you can go online to our website, our Facebook page, you'll see our phone numbers where you can call us, or you can go to Grape and Ale. They're also selling tickets, but they do ask that you bring cash. So thank you. Now, how would you like to come and help us do this sort of thing? We are looking for members and volunteers and people that might want to be on the board with us. And we need you all. You know, you can tell how much people care about the place. You know, how would you like to help keep the beaches clean, educate the public about our beaches, and about our natural resources that we care so much about here? We would love to hear from you. Please, you can give us a call. Our website, our Facebook page is up. Actually, downstairs, you'll see a poster about our auction. It's got my phone number, it's got the phone number for the chairperson for our group. Give us a call. We would love to hear from you. Again, Madam Mayor, council members, thank you so much.
Thank you.[1611.15][1611.15](APPLAUSE). Christina Dooley.
Christina Dooley, I live on Oak Island on the west end. I was going to talk about right-of-way parking, but I feel like that might have been done. So I'm going to move on to something bigger, that I think is more strategic, because you guys use that word a lot as a town council, and I'm not sure you know what that word means. As I said in The Princess Bride, you keep using that word. I do not think it means what you think it means. So when we talk about strategy, as a town, I'm not saying town council, as a town, I think that we're not strategic in our thinking. I think as a town, we are always reactive and not proactive. And I think some examples of this are what we've been talking about tonight. The first is removing right-of-way parking all over the island. It sounds slightly absurd when you say it out loud, and you hear all of the objections, but I think that was reactive, right? People were like, "Hey, if you're going to remove it on the beachfront, and that's going to impact me at the beach, it should impact all of us." That's not me, right?
No, sorry.
That should impact all of us, right? So, "Oh, it's got to be town-wide if it's going to work." Again, that's reactive, it's not proactive. It's not strategic in your thinking. You're not thinking big enough. You're thinking just in terms of, hey, how do we quell the uprising when our citizens are upset? That's how I feel, that we're working at this point. I also think that when we use words like strategic planning for paid parking, and we say it makes it safer. Paid parking does not make parking safer. It does not make access to the beach safer. It does not make it easier for emergency vehicles to get to the beach. You know what it does? Making people park in spaces, and then enforcing spaces. Does it matter if they're paid or not? No. It doesn't. That doesn't make it safer. So let's call it what it is. It was a money grab, and that's fine. Let's just be honest. You can also come to these meetings. We come and we say things at these meetings, or we email you, or we call, and we may get to talk to somebody. We may not get an answer. Definitely don't get an answer by email, especially if we CC everybody and their brother. We come here, we say things, we send questions, we don't get answers. Why not? Why do we not get answers to our questions? What's the problem here? So I just want to give you a quick 50, 49-second update on strategic planning. Okay, so strategic planning is the ability to lead ourselves in a way that advances the organization, in this case, the town, the missions and goals, and creates advantage for the long term. So we need to talk about our vision for the town. Do we have one? Does everyone have the same vision for the town? Because I feel like we're maybe not all rowing in the same direction. And if we're not all rowing in the same direction, many boaters know, you get nowhere. And that's where we are now. We talk about beach management plan over and over. We talk about paid parking for years and years. We get nowhere, because we don't all have the same vision. What do we want to do for the town, for our What do we want to do for the town, for our citizens? What direction do we want to take? And then our mission supports our vision. What we're going to do and for whom? Who as a town do we want to be now? Who as a town do we want to be in the future? What will our values be? What are our priorities that support those values? And then what goals or actions can we take that supports those priorities and that we can measure? So I'll go back to what I was saying, lack of strategy, we're always reactive. Let's really start thinking in bigger, oh, I'm out of time. Let's really start thinking bigger terms and figure out what we want to be now and in the future.
Pam Hicks. Pam Hicks.
Yeah. I answer everybody. Everybody too. Everyone I can. My name's Pam Hicks, I'm at 202 Northeast 64th Street. Thank you, Mayor, for your help with my information for trying to get our passports taken care of for our trip. I'm here because we're a resident of 64th Street, and we, most of us access the southeast end, to which Danny Thompson was talking earlier, we have very few spaces that are bumpered or designated spaces. I know you're going to think I'm stupid, when we were talking about paid parking, I was envisioning all these little paid parking meters like we used to have, you know, years ago, not this one sign that says, use this QR code. So I was like, okay, that's fine, if they're going to put these little meters up, and as long as they allow us residents to use our stickered vehicles, carts, or whatever, we're good. But then we feel that this is not, obviously not the plan, and we have lots of space in our access that are not bumpered. We have more people that live on our street that access the beach on a very regular basis, as Mr. Thompson had said, and this is not going to allow us to even park as residents. So we'd appreciate it if you all would look into this and give us, see that there, like he said, there's right-of-way parking, I guess, but we need bumpered spaces so that we're not in trouble. And I recall listening to another meeting where some lady said, we shouldn't have to scurry around as rats, like rats, as residents. We pay our taxes, are very generous, we spend a lot of money in this town as residents and keep it going all year round. We don't come in for the summer, but we shouldn't be penalized when we want to use the beach, which is what brought us here, to live. We moved here in March of 2020, right before the madness started with COVID. And we utilize the beach on beautiful days when we're not working and are able to go over there. And I know there are a lot more people that live here now than used to, that are residents that access. When I remember there being a discussion about there being 1,000 parking places, I don't know where there's 1,000 parking places. And then I've gotten a few responses to my emails about, well, there was about 1,200, and then we were going to do, look for another 800. Did you all actually do a study? Did somebody go out to every access and see that every space is being utilized? I mean, if you're going to charge parking to the visitors, that's fine, but those of us that live here and pay our taxes would like to be able to access the beach without an issue. So I would just implore that you all do take that into consideration. We try to do, we have mentioned about no zen parking, because we can get two carts in to one regular parking place that a car would, if it's about money. Putting in more parking places would be better than us residents using our sticker, then that's not money for you, because we'll be taking up those paid parking spaces. Appreciate your thoughts.
Thank you. Matthew Lox.
Matt Lox, I live at 216 Northeast 64th Street. Y'all got an email from me, but I'm just going to read that off, because the 64th Southwest Access is important to my neighborhood. We're a tight-knit group of people, we have, most of us are here year-round and spend a lot of time there, and we feel we're going to lose out. So on March 2nd, I was here, I spoke about our unique parking situation at our access. We have roughly 16 homes with full-time residents on Northeast 64th Street. Most of us, if not all, spend most of the weekends during the summer months, when it gets warmer, at the beach. A lot of the folks are retired, I mean, as soon as it gets warm out, they're down there. Most of us use golf carts to get to and from the beach. Most of us would park perpendicular to the roadway, as it is now, there's a right-of-way. If you're facing the beach, the right-of-way is on the right-hand side. Most of us, on the busy days, would park perpendicular to the roadway, side by side. Doing this allows the carts to park side by side, provides more parking for everyone. As it stands now, with the new parking system, by my count, I could be wrong, there are a total of nine designated parking spaces that are accessed. This is not enough to accommodate the folks that live here, full-time, let alone any visitors that come in. This would mean that people that have made this island their home, myself, my wife, my neighbors, and quite honestly, paid a premium for the home and pay a premium in taxes to live here, have extremely limited, if any, parking at the beach during the summer months, and that, to me and to my neighbors, I don't think seems fair. And I don't think it's a lot to ask. That's our problem. What I came up with a solution, I did send this to all of you, I did receive an email back, and I appreciate the people that took the time. But my solution was to give us that perpendicular parking in the right-of-way that isn't designated across from the designated parking. Golf cart only, that would allow us to, by my count, I could be wrong again, but my count, that would give us 12 to 15 additional carts that could park there. And that solves two problems. One, my neighbors and I, the ones that are here, 12 months out of the year, in the winter visiting the stores and the restaurants and spending our money and doing all those good things, have a place to park on the weekends during the summer months, but also it frees up the larger spaces for the visitors that are coming in a carload, and will allow the town to collect some more fees from those folks. So I was told then that you guys would consider it. I've been told again that you would consider it, but I hope you do. We're a tight group. I moved here to go to the beach, I moved here to have close access to the beach. I don't want to lose that, because I'd have to leave, and I don't want to leave. I love it here, it's a great place, the beach is beautiful, the community is great, and I don't want to leave my house. So thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Nancy McMurray.
Hi, I'm Nancy McMurray, 6607 West Beach Drive. I'm asking your support for the beach maintenance plan that's going to come before you tonight. We've heard passionate voices about people that live here, they enjoy going to the beach. We need to have investment on our island to support the beach. Our island is, everything, the economy here is based on having a vibrant beach. If we don't have a beach maintenance plan, we will have a beach that's in big trouble. Houses will not be rebuildable, we'll lose a huge part of our tax base. We have businesses here that depend on our vibrant beach. We have housekeeping companies, we have electricians, we have carpenters, HVAC companies, rental companies, got a new candy shop, we've got coffee shops, fabulous restaurants, new fitness businesses opened up on the island. All of this is predicated on having a vibrant, solid, good beach. Beach maintenance plan does that, and I implore you to support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Scott Vickbrun, I live at 6607 West Beach Drive, and I also am here just to employ or to support the beach maintenance program. Like everybody said, we need the beach. One statistic I don't think has come out, if we were not to adopt this, over 80% of the beachfront homes would not be rebuildable. So we need to push ahead and keep our beach in place, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Burr.
Hi, my name is Gail Burr, I live at 500 Country Club Drive. I'm not here to talk about anything that you all brought up, I'm here to talk about and think, and tell you how much I appreciate the major revision to the clubs and organization facility use agreement. But as usual, I have a few suggestions. Two of them, the first one is to clarify the annual room usage and set up breakdown fees. Under the Oak Island Recreation Department Agreement section, you say, equipment setup will be the responsibility of the club or organization. Under hours, you say, while the supplies will be provided, the setup and breakdown of said equipment will be the responsibility of the organization or club. Under the fees and security deposit section, I think we need to clarify it a little bit. The annual usage fee says that non-dues-paying clubs, organizations, and 501(c)(3) clubs and organizations do not pay an annual fee. Dues-paying organizations pay a $200 fee. What about those clubs and organizations that are not-for-profit but do not have a 501(c)(3) federal tax status? Just take some money out of their ability to perform. On the setup and breakdown fees, if a 501(c)(3) club wants the facility staff to set up and break down the room, the fee is $10 per room usage, excuse me. If a dues-paying club wants the facility staff to set up and break down the tables, the fee is $15 per usage. What is the charge for non-dues-paying clubs? May a club organization get a waiver due to maybe their seniority or their financial situation? And should a club or organization supply an arrangement layout plan for said chairs and tables? On the form, where does the club say how many tables and chairs they need? The second is regarding cancellations from the Recreation Department canceling it. This is not likely to happen, it's only happened once to the Quilt Guild in seven years. But I strongly suggest adding, if another location cannot be found, and the organization cannot obtain a refund from their expenses if they have an outside vendor come in, I think those said expenses should be reimbursed, because the cancellation was not due to the organization's fault. I have other considerations that are on my piece of paper, but I want to thank you for your time, and hopefully you'll see things my way as far as maybe a waiver. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
I don't have any more. Consent agenda, there are, oh, I'm sorry, council reports. Would you like to start?
I would, thank you.
Oh, what?
Excuse me, excuse me one minute. I got here after you had taken the comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, let me get my paper. My name is Donna Means, I live on Northeast 37th Street. I strongly oppose the beach re-nourishment proposal. We pay a sand tax of $600 a year, plus there's another tax on the water bill for like beach re-nourishment or whatever. And that's, I mean, I don't have it in front of me. There are very, very few over 40-year-old oceanfront homes. They've all been either washed away, and the lots were deemed unbuildable, and then all of a sudden, they became buildable, and we have all these big houses out there. The houses have been moved off the beach, and they're someplace else in Oak Island. Some of those lots that were deemed unbuildable, the original owners have come back to the beach, and I'll tell you, they were not happy that there were ginormous houses on their lots that were unbuildable, because they were forced to sell them or whatever. I appreciate that people who live on the oceanfront want some guarantees about rebuilding their house. My wind and hail has doubled in the years, the 10 years that I've lived here. I've never filed an insurance claim. The reason my wind and hail has doubled is because of ICAS, when all the insurance companies had to pay to have those houses fixed down on the ocean. Not only the houses here, but the houses that were damaged during the hurricane in Florida and the Gulf, the tornadoes and all that. I love going to the beach. I didn't mind you doing paid parking. I think we'll get rid of some of the riffraff that's been coming here for the past few years. Leaving dirty diapers in the parking lots, leaving all kinds of crap all over the beach because they're too damn lazy to get up and throw it in the trash cans. I appreciate it. The beach re-nourishment, yes, Moffitt and Nichols want you to do it, because they've got many, many, I lost a couple, a few seconds when you were talking to that other guy. I am totally against beach re-nourishment. Let the homeowners plant seagrass, let them plant, oh, look, I'm trying to take this, let them plant seagrass, let them plant vegetation bushes that are hardy for saltwater and saltair. Let them take an effort, make an effort to protect their homes. Thank you very much.
We're going to move on to council reports.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
Just a brief report this evening. Our wonderful Director for the Cape Fear RPO, Patrick Flanagan, resigned to move on to new opportunities, so I can't blame him for that, he's a great individual. I will say he will be dearly missed, because I enjoyed working with him, and he was an advocate for the feasibility study that this council adopted early in 2022, which included the counties and the states' plan for how greenways can become impactful and effective for us in Oak Island and in Brunswick County. I will say that a replacement for Patrick has been named. He will start sometime in April, a few days into April, and so we have not let that deter us. We continue to pursue the carbon reduction grant through that program. We've got some new contacts that we've been in contact with, and so we're moving forward, trying to take advantage of some of those grants that will help us with some of our capital expenditures that we're going to be faced with this year. But I did want to say a warm thank you to Patrick Flanagan for all of his efforts in his role as a Director for the Cape Fear RPO, and I look forward to working with his replacement at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Environmental Committee wanted me to be sure to tell people that on March 17th, they are having an oyster reef restoration training at Veterans Park, open to anyone. That is Friday. On April 13th, the Environmental Committee is having Arbor Day at Veterans Park. I think last year, the mayor and I were there. On April 14th, at Middleton Park, the Environmental Committee is having Earth Day celebrations. At a date to be determined, they are going to have a recognition of 26 years as a tree city. So that is what I wanted to say on their behalf. I wanted to not let you all forget. Pledge the Pink People came to tell us about a very big event in October, so learn a whole lot more about that and hopefully rally around that. Beach Preservation came up and gave a report and said they need volunteers to help them, even to serve on their committees. Give some thought to that. I was told that some information is going to be coming from the Parks and Rec Concerning Nature Trail in the future. That's exciting. One last thing, and I don't even know the gentleman's name, but I told someone I would bring this up. Apparently, everybody else knows Mr. Alex, who walks up and down the beach, and apparently, he is Mr. Goodwill Ambassador for Oak Island. And he's been in the hospital and been under the weather, so for all of those who know who Mr. Alex is, try to reach out to him. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Bell.
I would like to talk about the skate park. This coming Saturday, hopefully, we're having a reopening of Kevin Bell's Skate Park from 10 to 4:00. At the time the skate park originally opened, the wood forms used to construct the park's features were fairly common in small skate park design. Fast forward to 2020 and two decades' worth of use, salt air exposure taking its toll. Since the skate park's destruction over two years ago, it's been a long, winding road to restoration, but we made it. From the decision of fellow council members to the hard work of our staff in identifying funds, and of course, the constant support and input from town residents and all the hard work from Public Works and Stormwater, we have all shared in one of the greatest comeback stories in history, a story that thankfully turns a bright new chapter this weekend. Hope to see you guys there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may request that you keep Councilman Blaylock in your thoughts this evening. I see he is recovering and will be with us soon, we hope. One of my favorite motifs in literature is the tenor of the times, and I think all of us are resonating with the tenor of the times. It is difficult to build consensus. It is difficult to see a wind and weather insurance update that's 170% more than it was last year when you haven't filed a claim. It is, in a strange way, kind of by valent way, it's great to have rising property values, but then there are the implications of taxes. There are lots of long-term needs, be it infrastructure, be it roads, but at the core, what we need to do, and I've been saying this for almost six years now, we need to manage growth effectively, and that means we need to have reliable, sensible, sustainable policies. And that has been the work of this council and previous councils, and I do not expect that we will get unanimity around, this is a wonderful plan and everyone loves it. That's not how it works, folks. You get a choice at the ballot box. You get to elect the officials who strive to do the best that they can for the greatest number for the greatest good. That's how it works. And we are working as hard as possible to sort of manage those competing priorities. And we had a perfect example of the concern on the one side about beach management plan and its cost, and whether it should be socialized and who pays for it, and on the other hand, the dangers of inaction. So again, we appreciate your feedback. Thank you for coming. Thank you for speaking. Thank you for emailing. We do appreciate it, and we do read them. Each email that you send us, we read. We endeavor to read them and reply, and that's telling you that in some way, you've moved our thinking a little bit, whether to confirm it or to raise a question. So we thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Bock.
As Mayor, I just want to let you know that I continue to learn how to do my job more effectively. I'm participating in a number of courses through UNC School of Government, which have been pretty terrific in terms of providing me with additional tools and strategies for doing my job. Hopefully, this will help me, help council, and you move our town forward more effectively. We also visited our elected officials in Raleigh. Was it three weeks ago, two weeks ago? Time may be somewhere in there, along with Mr. Kelly, Mr. Hatton, and Ms. Stites. And it was a very successful visit. We had a two-page, double-sided, single-page document that we passed along to them as to all the things that we're doing in Oak Island. It was very well received by both Senator Raybon and Representative Miller. We had about 45 minutes with Representative Miller in a conversation about Oak Island and its future and where we hope to take it in the near term, at least. And he's working, they both are working very hard on our behalf. It was a very productive visit. It was very interesting to see how the House at least works, and they work quite effectively. I was pretty impressed with how their demeanor and how they managed to move things forward. So that's the summary of my report. I also want to echo Councilman Bell's excitement about the skate park. If you haven't been by to see it, please, it's worth at least a drive-by. I think you'll be very impressed with the work that's been done, thanks to our diligent staff. And if you can be there on Saturday, I don't want to steal anyone's thunder, but I believe we have some professional skateboarders, yes, who will show you how the different aspects of the skate park actually function, and I'm very much looking forward to that. So that is my report. Can we get through the consent agenda?
Okay.
Do we have a motion? So there are three things on the consent agenda. Authorization for staff to advertise for delinquent taxes, approval of meeting minutes, and the Budget Ordinance Amendment transferring capital reserve funds from the sale of one of our fire trucks. Are there any discussion about that?
And the letter of intent.
Thank you. And the letter of intent. Thank you very much.
So moved. Madam Mayor.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. And with that, I'm going to ask for a 10-minute break.
Perfect.
And we'll reconvene at 7:30. Convene the meeting. I think we have an extra six minutes in that break, but appreciate the time. We're going to move on with committee appointments.
Do you want them all or one at a time?
You can give them all to me.
They're right down there where they always are.
So we have committee appointments tonight for the two terms for the Board of Adjustment being considered. There's an unexpired term for the Board of Adjustment, and then there are three terms ending for the Recreational Advisory Board. So council is voting using ballots up here, and if you'll give us a few minutes, we'll tally these and let you know the results.
Councilmembers, please remember to sign your ballots.
Sign your ballots, please.
Just trying to be helpful, Mr. Kelly.
Is this the first time you've done this? Hey, I was frazzled.
Hey. We got all night.
And we usually.
No, we don't.
No, we don't. Nichols should have showed her eight of us. I think Nichols, they should have gone and eaten her. We come back next Monday. Six days.
Tough. We can handle it.
Yeah, we're all good.
We voted for two.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay, for the Board of Adjustment, two regular terms. We have votes from Councilmember Kraft for John McLendon and Mark Spicer, votes from Councilmember Martin for Ed Hardy and John McLendon, votes from Mayor Pro Tembok for Ed Hardy and Mark Spicer, and votes from Councilmember Bell for Ed Hardy and John McLendon. So that gives us three votes for Ed Hardy and three votes for John McLendon. Those would be the top two vote-getters. And then for the unexpired term for the Board of Adjustment, we have vote from Councilmember Kraft for Charles Farley, Councilmember Martin for Charles Farley, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tembok for Charles Farley, and Councilmember Bell for Sylvia Van Dusen. So that would be three votes for Mr. Farley. And then for the Recreation Advisory Board with three terms available, we have votes from Councilmember Kraft for Wayne Brookover, Gail Burr, and Carrie Lenzen, votes from Councilmember Martin for Wayne Brookover, Gail Burr, and Carrie Lenzen, from Councilmember Bell for Wayne Brookover, Carrie Lenzen, and Lisa Nolan, and from Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tembok for Wayne Brookover, Carrie Lenzen, and Lisa Nolan. So by my count, that is four votes for Wayne Brookover and four votes for Carrie Lenzen, but then there are two votes for Gail Burr and two votes for Lisa Nolan. So that is council's pleasure. So we vote again for the last two? How do you want to do? Yes, you vote again for a third member, if that's the way you want to handle that, or if you want to re-advertise or put them on next month, or whatever council wishes to do. Revote, re-advertise.
Take one revote.
Are two options.
Let's take one revote and see what happens.
Okay.
So there's two eligible candidates left, Ms. Stites.
There's two with two votes.
Right, so those two would be the two candidates eligible for this next round.
Right.
I'm slow. I'm just trying to make sure.
No, thank you. Okay, I'm just going to write in second vote on the sheet, and we'll pass them back to you. Yes.
Tell me who the two are again.
Lisa Nolan and Gail Burr.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor, I propose we carry this item into next month and let our colleague, who is absent this evening, join us and break the tie.
I agree.
I agree. Yes.
Does that require a motion? Just process. So we're filling two seats with Mr. Brookover and Ms. Lenzen, and then will, the tie will be taken up in the March meeting. I'm sorry, this is March, the April meeting.
And that's by consensus of council. We didn't do it by way of motion, just so the minutes reflect that.
Thank you. Congratulations to all those who have been appointed. We look forward to great things. Next on the agenda, administrative reports.
Yes, ma'am. Auto Connect will start being here in Town Hall starting tomorrow morning. Nine o'clock until noon, they will be selling season permits. They're going to sell 200 of those per day. There's a thousand of those that are available, but for the next five days, they're going to sell 2,00, excuse me, 200 of those per day. Town permits will be sold downstairs for the 15th through the 17th from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Then next week, on March 20th and 21st, everything will be by phone. Season permits will be in the morning, same time, 9 till noon, and town permits will be 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then, starting on March 22nd, it'll be by phone from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And once they go live on the web, we will make sure we post that and let everybody know that then you can be purchasing online as well. Kevin Bell Skate Park, it was talked about. Staff's been working down there to get this thing ready. March 18th, right this minute, it's a 90% chance of rain. It may not happen on March 18th, but March 19th has 1% chance of rain, so we may be having to look at it to move it till Sunday. We're going to make that decision tomorrow. We do have some vendors and professional skaters coming down to sort of demo and show off the skate park. We also have Matt from.
Never Ever Boards.
Never Ever Boards, I always say that name wrong, but we also have Matt coming over here doing some demos and door prizes and things like that. We'll have fire, police, and water rescue out there, since we'll be right there next to their building. I'll be doing some hot dogs and hamburgers. So if we change it till Sunday, please come on Sunday. If we keep it on Saturday, it'd be a great thing, but I don't know about the weather or if we'll be able to do about that, unless somebody can say a few kind words and get that put off for us. Public Works has been working out there. Stormwater's been working out there. Everybody has pitched in to make that the site that we want it to be. Also, we've been planting some oak trees around town. We planted some at the skate park. We also, for Charlie Blaylock, for those that know that he loved palm trees, we planted some palm trees from Charlie. And he's not getting here tonight to have me poke at him on that one. But we did, we planted some oak trees along the sidewalk at Middleton Park, and we planted three oak trees behind Town Hall. So we are trying to get some of those things going. Public Works has been working diligently down there to get this facility open, so we heard the concerns about Southeast 64th. We have other ones at 71st Street, and we have other locations that people's been asking about as well. We are starting to get to those. We worked on the West End first, and now we're getting ready to start on the East End. We worked on the West End first, and now we're getting ready to start on the East End and head back toward Middleton. But give us some time, we are working on those, trying to get some additional spaces to make sure we have town permit spots identified. Scott, let us know, the signs came in today for those spots, so we can get out and start advertising, excuse me, putting those signs up as well. I asked Scott about the signs at the boat ramp, and he said we don't have any at 55th. We do have them at 57th. I'm assuming we will. Yeah, it's in the paid parking area. But on 55th and Yod, we don't have anything or anything over there for those. And that's sort of a brief report, so we can get to the things that matter tonight.
And Mr. Eads.
No report, we have some items to discuss in closed session.
Thank you. Old business. First on the agenda is consideration of the beach management plan to be submitted to the CRC. Do you have a prelude to that?
We'd like to welcome Sam Morrison, or Muffin Nichols, to get us started. And I'm sure he'll call on Doug when he needs Doug to step up.
Go ahead and go to the next slide.
The little pointer works if you just want to push it.
Oh. Thank you. Okay, Madam Mayor and council members, thanks for letting us come and present to you. Wanted to talk about the beach management plan, the agenda. I'm just going to talk off this one slide about everything, except the timeline, the last one. The first item is how we got here. I think, I just wanted to provide a little context. I know you guys all probably know this, but basically, what, what happened was from 2016 to 2022, the town operated under a development line. And then on August 1st of 2022, the CRC had a rule change, getting rid of the development line. And in order, and by getting rid of the development line, it required the town to go back to the, what I'll call the static line, but it's now called the pre-project line of 1998. And the setbacks are measured from this line that was established in 1998. So this, and what they required in order for you to not have that line as a setback line is to submit a beach management plan, which is basically a static line exception. So I think, just from a standpoint of that this is a plan, but it is just an item that is a static line exception. And what the static line exception or the beach management plan basically allows you to do is to, to replace the pre-project line with the first line of stable vegetation to measure your setback from. Does, and so it allows you to reestablish that line, or not reestablish, excuse me, replace that line if you're maintaining a beach to that first line of stable vegetation. So what happened there is we developed a beach management plan to let us take advantage of that, and we submitted that to the town back last fall. There was a public meeting, there was public comments. We've taken the public comments into consideration and updated the plan, and now the plan is ready and prepared to be sent to the CRC for adoption. What we do is, is up for authorization for us to submit it to the CRC this evening. We need to do this in order to get this plan on the agenda for the June CRC meeting, is what we're, we're looking at. I just wanted to provide a timeline for the BMP and what the potential is for, for moving forward with this beach management plan. So a lot of the work that we've done to date over the last three years has set us up for this beach management plan. They're taking advantage of this beach management plan, which, again, moves that static line out to the first line of stable vegetation. So we had the two dune nourishment projects in 2021, 2122, and then we, we planted dune grass on those dunes when we did the construction. Then CRC in August changed the rules. The town has entered into a dune planting program this spring, which is currently ongoing. And so if we were to adopt and, and get approved for the beach management plan, the assumption would be it would be the summer of 2023. And as I said, the, the plan is just a plan. And the CRC is just making sure you follow the plan. So they give you a five-year approval time window for the plan. And then they reevaluate it after five years. So in 2023, if it's adopted, basically, that would give us till the summer of 2028 for this. I'm going to call it, it's a static line exception, so to speak. And as part of that plan, in the first five years, we have this initial project, which is scheduled for '24, '25, which is what we call, I guess, the extending the berm or the berm project. The funding is already in place from the town, of, of which it has a $20 million grant from the state, which is matching funds. And then, if we put that in place, and based on the planting we've done to date, the, we believe that we'll be able to establish that new vegetation line around the spring of 2025, which then that would be where the setbacks are measured from. Based on the plan also, we anticipate the first maintenance event not happening till six years after the berm widening in '24, '25. So coming up to the summer of 2028, the BMP would be up for renewal prior to the first maintenance event. So the CRC would then evaluate, we, we'd look at the plan. Are we still on plan? We'd send it to the CRC, they would evaluate if we've met the plan. And if we have, likely, they would extend it for another five years. So the next five years then would come, and at 2028, if it's renewed for five years, we have our first anticipated maintenance project. And based on that plan, right now, we have the costs covered for that first maintenance event in the financial section of the, of the beach management plan. However, if you, if the town decides to take no action at that point, and they don't follow the plan, then basically, in 2033, of summer 2033, CRC reviews our submission of the plan, or whether we submit a plan or not, but we review the submission, and they likely would just let it sunset, because we haven't followed the plan. So just that, the point is, is it, it's a plan we would try to follow, but at the end of when the town diverts from the plan or doesn't take action on the plan, it just sunsets. And, and we would then revert back to that 1998 pre-project line as you measure your setbacks from. And that's it.
One real quick question before everybody else starts asking, if I may. You said 2025, we would then be in compliance.
What would happen, what, what are, okay, I apologize. The, there's not a rule in place right now, but it would, there may be a rule, but what we anticipate is that the work that we're doing now and the planting that we're doing now would become the first line of natural, stable vegetation. It has to become stabilized and, and naturalized. So in '25, the anticipation would be that the DCM would come out and, and look at and say, okay, this is where we can measure it back. Now, it can be earlier than that. It's going to be on an individual basis, or a lot-by-lot basis, or a stretch, depending on where the development or rebuilding or whatever might need to happen. It can happen earlier than that, but kind of the anticipation, why I showed it on the timeline, is that it takes a year and a half to two years for the dune grass to become, quote-unquote, the first line of natural, you know, stable, stable vegetation.
Which we started planting when?
Well, we started planting back after the 2021 project, so some of that. Now, that planting didn't take hold very well. This year's, or, I'm sorry, the 21, 22 project did much better. But we went in and filled in some gaps trying to, and actually redid a lot of work down on the 2021 project. And then we filled in some gaps on the 21, 22 projects to try to help expedite that, you know, establishment of the vegetation.
And I know my colleagues have a whole lot of.
We also, I just, on here, I mean, you know, and I think it happened at an earlier council meeting that somebody had mentioned, you know, hey, why aren't we spending more money on vegetation and trying to, you know, trying to protect and, you know, spend the money if we're making this major investment on putting the sand there? And that's what I think the town has started to do, and, and there's been some discussion about a potential, you know, spring of 2024 planting as well.
We brought this to you probably two months ago. We looked at a two-year program, coastal planting or coastal transplants. They gave us a two-year projection on what they could do. We brought it to you, got a budget amendment, did the first phase, and then we went ahead and put in for the different species to be planted in to fill in. When we had the meeting with Kama down at 801, they talked about possibilities of the two-year. Once you replant a dune, or once you have a project that is completed and you vegetate it, they're looking at a two-year program to make sure that that is stable at that point. But everything that we're doing, individuals can come in and do as well. If they wanted to come in and plant dunes, or plant the dunes, fertilize the dunes, irrigate the dunes, whatever they would like to do, they can get that to grow as fast as they can try to make it work. And then those people would contact Courtney, her LPO officer. She would go out and measure those lots to see where that setback is. So this is public and sort of private. We have a plan going forward with our vegetation, but homeowners can go in and do their vegetation as well to try to get to that window. Our, our plants are growing currently, so we're trying to get ahead of it and to stay ahead of it as we go forward. And that's sort of where we're at on the vegetation.
Are you saying, though, that there's not a magic wand that you can wave that, that says if we agreed to a beach management plan tonight, tomorrow night, people can go to bed not worrying about a hurricane and making their house non-rebuildable? Or are you saying they have to wait 18 months before that situation arises?
Commissioner Kraft, there, I'd, I'd have to lay it out on a thing, but if we would, or, not tonight or tomorrow, but in June, CRC adopts the plan, right? There are homes on the beach that would have immediate relief from the pre-project line to the current, the first line of stable vegetation setback at 60 feet.
House by house.
Yes, but there are, there are a number of homes that would take advantage of that, immediately.
But there's also still homes that will not be complied.
Yeah, there'd still be, there'd still be a lot of homes that, I would say a majority of the homes would still be on that waiting timeline to try to establish the vegetation and get it out, you know, get it reestablished when something might happen, so.
So, am I correct in understanding that, that dune stabilization, the vegetation, right? I mean, it's, dunes move and plants come and go, and hurricanes or other storms happen. So it's not as if once you're, you're good, right? So a home that is, has stable vegetation and can move to the, can move forward, right, as a setback, that may not be the same thing after a major storm if we lose that dune, is that correct?
Correct, it, it could become, after, post a storm, it could become non-conforming, based on the, the, the shape of the beach and, and where the vegetation is, absolutely.
I just don't want anyone to walk away thinking that once they meet this criteria, that it's a done deal. It's, it's, when you live on the beach, you assume the risks of the sand and the vegetation, and how they withstand our storms and our currents.
And, and, and I'll ask Doug to correct me if I'm wrong, but it's different than the development line, because the development line is a set line. This line will, anytime a permit would be required or requested, they would come out and, and survey the area and, and determine where that first line of natural, stable vegetation was, and the setback would be measured from there.
From there, at the time of permit request?
At the time, yes.
I just want that to be clear.
Well, there's, there's two times, at the time of the request and.
That's right. The Coastal Resources Commission rules require that at the time of the permit issuance, you have the vegetation line. However, there's also a requirement that those permits may be good for three years. If the development doesn't take place immediately, they would have to go back out before the development actually started, within 60 days of that, and resurvey the, the vegetation line and reestablish the setback. There have been cases where something was permitted as buildable, but by the time they got to construction, the vegetation line had moved landward, and they could no longer build what they had permitted.
So it seems the town would do well to protect, say, the 24, FY24 plan when we, again, put sand on the beach to help beach resilience against storms, that we would do well to protect the sand that we move, take every measure. So I only see vegetation. And my question is, are there not other tactics that can be deployed to help protect that sand? That's something for a future conversation, but.
That's when we get into, this is the beach management plan.
Right.
And a template sort of laid out for us to follow to be able to apply for the beach management plan.
Right.
The more things that you're addressing will be in the, the one we're going to change the name to, Beach and Inlet Management Plan, so we can follow along. But that one will be where you start talking about offshore, onshore, and whatever you're wanting to do for.
But in principle, that would be.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
Follow-up on that. I'm still worried about the people that can't go to sleep at night because they're worried about a hurricane coming next week and their house is not rebuildable. Why are we waiting till June instead of the April 26 meeting?
We've, we've basically already missed that deadline, because we need to get six, the, the plan in front of DCM six weeks in advance.
As early as we can get it there is June.
That's, that's the, where we are now. If we were to get approval or authorization tonight, we'd move to get it in front of the CRC in June.
And the fact that we've got our $40 million project kicking off next year, that puts us ahead of the schedule once we get into their system.
I'm sorry.
We've already, if we allocate $40 million for 2024 and 2025, we are there for the next five years.
In, in all likelihood, there's no guarantees on, on anything, but, but yes. I mean, in all likelihood, based on historical data, it'll take six years before the first maintenance event would be needed. So the work we've done to date and the plan for the '24, '25 sets us up very well for getting approval on the initial five years. And then, when the initial five years comes up, it's prior to the first maintenance event. So yes, the next five years should be good. And then, and then the maintenance events start to kick in and the town.
Next five years would be good, but the next five years doesn't really begin for us until 18 months from now. Vegetation takes hold.
Well, no, you're, you'll be into your five years. So, so basically, once the vegetation takes hold, whenever that is, then you'll have, if it's 18 months from now, or, or 18 months from June, then you have three and a half years on that first year of the plan. That, that, that line will be, I keep wanting to say reestablished, it'll be, replace the 1998 pre-project line.
So, I'm sorry, Councilman Kraft, are you, do you have another question?
Yeah.
So initially, there were two concerns that I voiced, I'll, I'll voice them again. One is the, the level of, the level of commitment and the, and the length of the commitment that this would require us to, to subscribe to. And the other was the cost, which, quite frankly, cost is always an issue in these matters. So what I hear you saying is that the current project, which is funded by town and by state, would provide some level of protection to the 523 homes which are in peril, but not the majority. That would require vegetation to continue to thrive, prosper, and be approved. So probably that, her, Councilman Kraft's question is 18 months out. And then we come to the first beach replenishment. Now, originally, we were using number. Now, originally, we were using numbers like 45 million, you're using 30, roughly 34 million, I'm rounding up. But how reliable is that number? Because it's six years out. That's a projection, correct?
Absolutely a judgment, based on historical data and, and just, but, you know, forecasting it based on, on the Hindcast data.
Right. So taking the sand tax, the occupancy tax and backstopping that with the general fund, we're, we're guesstimating what it would cost to get the sand here.
I, I would, I would venture to say it's not guesstimating, it's engineering and, and looking at it from a, but.
Well, there's, there's a range of confidence and a margin of error, yeah, right? That's not a precise number. Would it be fair to say that if anything, it's going to cost more?
Would it be fair to say anything?
Is this a midline number, this 34 million, or is it potentially likely to be larger?
It has potential to be larger or, or it could be, the, the maintenance event could be sooner.
So that's another concern.
But, but it's a, it's, to me, it is a midline number, if not edging a little bit on conservative, you know, being conservative in the plan, but, but it, even if it's a conservative number, it still could go.
Let me ask the question I asked the last time. So if I took the, the most conservative path, and I know you, your numbers are relatively conservative, but if I just said the accommodations tax is not going to grow significantly, you'll have it growing from 1.5 to 2. But what if we have a recession? What if it doesn't grow? What if the sand tax stays the same? So roughly, we would end up with 20 million instead of 33 million. Can we use the 20 million, which we can afford? We can project that very confidently, I think, short of a, a deep recession. Can we make do with that from Moffett Nichols' point of view? Because that's what we can afford. That is a certainty. Does that make sense? If you only had 20 million, what can you do? I'll put it that way. There you go.
Well, it, it's, I mean, I think it's like anything. You see the condition of the beach now. And if we spend the money to build it out with the $40 million project in 2425, and it recedes or erodes back to a level where we, our, our mid-range or conservative estimate, if it does in six years and then you have 20 million, you're not going to build it back to where it was.
But what if it doesn't?
Well, you can either, you either don't spend the money and save it for the next event and, or, or wait a year or two years down the road. I mean, the way it's set up is you don't have to do a maintenance project until you meet, or reach triggers. And that's a certain erosion of the beach and sand leaving the system. And so that's what dictates when that maintenance event has to happen. And, and I can't stand here today with, with a high level of confidence that's going to say it's going to happen in, in 2030, 2031, or 2031, 2032, or win that. But, you know, based on the data that we've reviewed, it's a six-year cycle.
So are you also, I want to be clear that I'm understanding the, the implications of what you're proposing. Are you saying in, if we got all the way to 2031 and your projections were slightly off, let's, let's say the storm cycle is unfavorable to us and we're looking at a, a number much higher, are you saying that we, we can simply walk away, abrogate CRC and just say goodbye, we'll, we'll do what we can do? Is that?
Yeah, and, and you would not, I mean, excuse me, you would not even have to say that in 2031. I mean, you would have to, excuse me. That would come about when the renewal was required in the summer of 2023. So yes, I mean, that, that plan, once readopted in 2028, excuse me.
Do you need a cough drop? We have some over there.
I think I'm okay. Just, once I get a tickle on the. Once readopted in the summer of 2028, it would be good till summer of 2020, or 2033. So it wouldn't, CRC would not review it until then. And if at that point you did not, you hit the triggers that I was talking about, that required a maintenance event and you didn't do it, in all likelihood, CRC would not readopt again and it'd sunset and you'd have to go back to the pre-project line of 1998.
So our, our commitment is contingent on the continuing will to go forward.
Correct.
By councils next.
And the CRC.
And the CRC approval, yeah, always, the bureaucracy. Is that fair?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So the other thing that I hear you saying is because the, the current dune restoration project is already funded, we should take advantage and file, but that we at any point could end our commitment at the end of the six-year cycle. Correct?
At the end of the six-year cycle?
When the volumetric triggers hit, we could say, we're not going to put 45 more million dollars into this project.
Correct. No matter when that hits.
Right. So it's not a 30-year contract. It's a 30-year.
It's a 30-year plan. And, and again, that's why I was trying to give it context. I may not have expressed it clearly at the beginning. I was trying to give it context at the beginning. This is a static line exception. It's not a commitment to a plan. It's, it's how they, but they want to see that the, the town has a plan for 30 years. But they don't give you that, they don't give you that, that exception for 30 years. They reevaluate it every five years.
Fair enough. And they don't guarantee additional funding either.
Right.
Right.
Right. They just change rules whenever they please. So what's the likelihood if the CRC changes, membership changes direction?
That's not a question.
I would like for you to pull out your crystal ball and answer that question.
Maybe the same percentage of likelihood that the Town Council of Oak Island might change over that time. It, it's impossible to tell. They do reappoint members on a sliding two-year schedule. The political winds out of Raleigh have a major impact on this. But I know that there is no desire currently, since they just went through this effort to get, get rid of the development line, which had fallen out of favor with the commission. There's no, there, I have heard no winds whatsoever that there is a desire to change this, but that, that could happen tomorrow.
And that could, and it could swing back to a more conservative development line type CRC composition as well.
And.
I would say that.
I'm sorry, bro.
Well, when I say, it depends on how you define conservative and not as conservative, but the removal of the development line could have significant impacts. And the beach management plan is the only vehicle that I'm aware of, and Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, that would allow us to try to reestablish something similar to the development line to allow these houses to be rebuilt.
That's, that is correct. To gain benefit over and above the 1998 static line or what is now called the pre-project line, this is really the only avenue available.
If, if I may ask this, it's my understanding CRC wants a plan. They haven't put a money figure on it. They just want to see what our plan is and have it be feasible.
Yes, sir.
What's wrong with thinking of submitting a plan of $4 million annually? And as long as we have $6 million, $7 million annually, apply $6 million, $7 million to the process. The years we don't have $6 or $7 million because of accommodation tax or sand tax, we've committed to, to $4 million and we're still in compliance. Can you work with that?
The Coastal Resources Commission, I do not believe, has any figure in their mind about the level of protection that a beach community needs to implement to protect their beach. They're leaving, I believe, those decisions up to the local governments. If you say that you wanted to provide beach protection by doing half of what may be proposed today, I would believe that you would still have a very feasible avenue to run through and get the beach management plan for that modified proposal approved by the Coastal Resources Commission.
And then on a utopian thinking, if the money's there, do more. Sam, what you thinking, sir?
Yeah, just as a comment to that, and, and I, I think I appreciate where you're coming from. And, and I think Doug can probably back me up, but the issue would become is, you know, we're providing the CRC kind of what it's going to take to maintain this beach and not lose beach and continually lose ground to, to this. And so if, if you did have less money and, and the trigger hit, I think the CRC would look favorably upon the town, saying they're still attempting to maintain the beach. They just didn't have the funding. But at, at some point, you can't just fund the beach at half what we're talking about and, and maintain the beach. You're going to continually lose ground to it.
I understand.
So I, I just want to make that clear that, like, that we can't just say, okay, we're just, we've got a $5 million budget every six, or that's, or a million dollars a year and in six years, we've got $6 million to spend, that.
But what we're, what we're trying to get you to say and mean is that we would not be putting our townspeople in jeopardy of spending millions of dollars down the road that our grandchildren would have to, to fund. That's what we're, we're trying to get to. Is, we understand what we need to do, but we want to understand that this is not something that we are saying we will do because we're not, we're not sure who's going to be here when we get ready to do it.
The beach management plan is essentially, has the same elements of what the static line exemption. You received a static line exemption for five years.
Okay.
So that's all you're doing is, is getting a five-year moving forward static line exemption. And that even the static line exemption required you to have a plan to move forward. But at any time, if you don't move on that plan, CRC has the right to come back and say, we're not giving that exemption or we're not adopting the plan moving forward. So at any time, the town can move away from it if they don't feel comfortable with, with, with the maintenance plan moving forward.
If I may ask, Sam, but am I hearing this right? If we want to take a lesser value, $4 million instead of $5 million, are you saying that you can work with that and probably keep us in compliance? Or are you saying somewhere along the way, we might have a shortfall and they will say you're no longer in compliance?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's two things that are going to happen if it just, if you continue to underfund what it is. I mean, two things, you're going to, the, the beach is going to retreat and you're going to not be able to maintain the, the vegetation, the first line of stable vegetation. So that's going to naturally move back if you don't maintain the beach at the level, once we get this 2425 project.
But for five years, we're good. And then after that, we either have to have enough money or we are going to be.
Well, when the maintenance comes up, and, and, and I've spoke with Doug about it, and again, I'll let him, but he said, you know, and there's no guarantees with any of this with the CRC, but if you're attempting, making the attempt to make, you know, have a maintained beach, then they'll look favorably upon that. But at some point, it will catch up to you.
But it's my understanding that we've been instructed that the CRC will not hold us accountable to any funding models we put forward as long as we've put forward a plan. Is that correct? Yes, that's correct. Right. And Councilmember Bell, I'm not sure we will get an answer to the questions that, that you ask. Because why, why would we? They, they've laid out their plan, making their assumptions on, on the maintenance event, how much we need. They, they're making assumptions in their financial model that our sand tax will be forecasted to rise. We, we haven't made any plans that I'm aware of to change property rates or sand tax rates or commit to increasing the income that we get today. So my concern comes back to something that Councilmember Bach brought up, which is there's really no guarantee at the CRC level or at this board's level and possibly not even with the engineering firm on what six years transpires looks like, right? I can tell you right now, you know, I, I've got a, a chart here that was presented by Moffett and Nickel the last time I sat through their presentation. And they have a, a maintenance event of 1.3 million cubic yards. But now I look in our agenda packet tonight on page 95, they've already increased that number to 1.38 million cubic yards. And the total cost has gone from 31.9 million now to 33.375 million. And this has just been probably within 12 months or less of us continuing to get updates. So I would, I would propose that every time we come to the table and talk about a beach management plan and, and maintenance events, that number is just going to continue to go, get higher. There'll be more sand, there'll be more dollars, just more and more. So what I would like to do is to position us with a more conservative model for the taxpayers. And I don't want to use 3.5 million dollar accommodation funds as a projection. There, there's no way we're going to, yes, we're seeing an uplift right now in accommodation tax, but we just came out of a pandemic. People were sheltered in place for months or even years and couldn't get away. And we reopened for business and now we're flooded with, with our rental economy, which is tremendous news. But to Councilmember Bach's point, what happens in a recession? Whether that occurs this summer or maybe it doesn't happen for two more summers, there could be a downturn in accommodations tax. So I prefer to go with a more conservative number on accommodations tax, something that we're accustomed to seeing in the, more like the $2 million range annually. And then our, our sand tax, you know, sometimes is more like 1.5. So I would present that we could, we could forecast at a minimum, $3.5 million a year that would be comfortably accumulating in, in an account for a maintenance event. Over six years is, is $21 million. That's, that's, that's a lot of money that is already tied to funding sources that we have today. We're not having to project an increase in sand tax. We're not having to project an increase in accommodation tax. We can rest assured that 3.5 million annually today is a, is a solid conservative number that generates $21 million for our first maintenance event. And if I look at the volumes on, on their worksheets, they're projecting in six years that we would need over 1.3 million cubic yards of sand? When the beach nourishment project, that $40 million is going to put 1.6 million cubic yard? I'm not an engineer people, but I, I don't find it believable that in six years, we've got to replace 83.6% of our beach after we just spent $40 million on it. Now, we might be taking a chance, but that's a chance I'm willing to take for the taxpayers to be more conservative, to say that our first maintenance event, we're willing to invest $21 million, not the, the 33 or, or by the time it happens, probably $40 million for a maintenance event. My gosh, that's going to be replacing the entire beach every six years. I just find that incredibly hard to consume as, as a taxpayer myself. Especially when in your, in your materials I've seen before, you say that there's a two-foot per year erosion rate for Oak Island. So in six years, that's, that's 12 feet of beach. Do we have 1.3 million cubic yards of sand in 12 feet of, of the beach? And I understand you're going to say, well, as you get closer to the water, you know, there's, it builds up and yes, there's more volume of sand. But I just really struggle with committing, not only this council, but future taxpayers, future councils. I just cannot fathom committing over 30, approaching $40 million for a maintenance event if we're not going to be held accountable by the CRC. That tells me that real-world events will dictate what our maintenance program will be. So we'll show them a maintenance program. We'll show. We'll show them we have dunes with vegetations. We'll show them we're spending $40 million to do a beach nourishment project. But I think we don't need to show them an excessive beach management plan. We can show them one, but it's got to be within reach. It's got to be something that's achievable for taxpayers, for future councils, even for future CRC members. They've got to see that it's obtainable, and I, I don't agree with projections that are in your finance model. So my recommendation is, I'm, I'm in favor this evening of moving forward with responding to the CRC, but my preference is that we submit a timeline with funding that only reflects a $21 million finance for maintenance of the future, and we'll revisit that in 2028 if that's the time period that we have to come to. So, and one more comment, I think your model assumes that you're drawing down our reserves. We just drew down our reserves to commit to $40 million, and Mr. Hatton assured us that the big drawdown we just took to get to the 40 million would still keep us right within that threshold of where we're comfortable operating as a town. Any more drawdowns to fund a maintenance event could, I think, put us in financial risk of handling any future emergency events that may come. So that's what I would propose, that we, we do move forward, but I want to see us move forward with, with less of a financial commitment on the back end of this, because there's too many unknowns, right? What if the CRC changes? What if this board changes? What if their projections change? I mean, what if we don't get a storm? What if we get, you know, an extra storm? There's too many what-ifs. So I'm more comfortable with something that the taxpayers understand and can consume. I think they can hear, oh, we can raise $21 million, we do that anyway. It's part of our normal revenue source that we're already collecting today. In my mind, that makes sense.
If you can put that in a motion, I'll second it.
And what Councilman Martin was saying.
From, go ahead.
I think from the financial point of view, to put it simply in that quaint, you know, phrase that we've all heard since childhood, we, we need to live within our means. If the assured revenue that we can straight line project or modestly inflate, that's the number we need to work with, and we need to submit that to the CRC. Because other than that, it's, it's all voodoo economics. It's just speculation about what's going to happen. And I'm going to say again, and I've been saying this for a while, half the economists in the country are predicting a deep recession, a collapse of the stock, you know, this could all change. We can't fund on that basis, nor can we commit future councils to that kind of speculation. So if it is 21 million, or whatever Councilman Martin has sketched out here, what can you do with that? What does that do to Moffett Nichols if in fact that is our re-nourishment number? I know you've argued you need 33 or 35 or 40 to do the whole beach, but what if we only have 21? Then what? From an engineering point of view, then what?
Yeah, again, I'll just reiterate that, you know, the numbers are based on hindcast data. And so I think the, the, the beauty about the plan, it doesn't commit $33 million every six years, it commits the town to do a project once the triggers are hit. So if, if you're losing two feet of beach and we've got 50 feet of beach and it takes 25 years to get there, you don't have to do a maintenance project for 25 years. So this is our best, uh, display of, of hindcast data on what the annual losses of material on Oak Island's beach is, and that is, you know, what we've put down. Now, if you say you only have 21 million and that trigger is hit every six years, you're going to be fighting the losing battle, just because you're not going to be able to replace the amount of material that's lost if you hit that trigger in, in six years. The trick, the, the trigger is where you're at 3, 1.38 million cubic yards.
But that is if we hit the trigger.
If you hit the trigger.
And, and also each time there's a named storm, I think in Matthew, we receive $10 million from FEMA.
Absolutely. There's always going to be other funding sources you're going to be looking for, too. I mean, whether it be a state grant or federal monies, I mean, so, you know, you're, you're taking, as you say, the most conservative, what can we get and what can we have in six years? But, but if you, if you don't believe the numbers of the erosion, you're not going to hit the trigger in six years.
But I think we're all saying the same thing, and I go back to one of my original thoughts. If our accommodation tax is strong for the next two years, we have more than $21 million to put toward that project. If our accommodation tax is not strong the next two years, we can probably live at 21 million. But if we commit to a $21 million plan and end up with $26 million, $27 million to put toward it, we committed to our 21 and we went over and above, and that should keep triggers from triggering.
It's not a dollar trigger. It's a, it's a, it's a protection on the beach. It's a, it's amount of quantity on the beach that gives you a 10-year level of protection for the first-line homes.
But that quantity costs money.
Yes, but, but we're never, we're never talking about financial triggers here. That's just a cost we put forward based on volume triggers.
Well, we're accountable for financial triggers to, to everybody out there, right? So what I don't want to do is overtax and overburden the taxpayers for six years, and then we go, oh, wow, we, we did really well, and we've got far more money than we projected for a beach, a beach maintenance event. And so we can save that. We don't, we don't need to spend that. We'll just, we'll do the maintenance and we'll, we'll save all this money. Well, that's not fair to them. They, they paid into a plan more money than was needed to, to represent what the CRC needs. That's what I'm trying to get to. The CRC needs to see a plan. We can put forward a plan that shows a fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers of Oak Island that does still perform maintenance. I'm using your current projections, and 21 million buys us 720,000 cubic yards of sand in six years. That represents almost half of the $40 million beach nourishment project. That sounds like a lot of sand to me. So, you know, maybe we are a little exposed at 21 million, but 21 million still buys sand for a maintenance event in six years, correct?
Absolutely.
Right. So, so your projections say we need 34, 35, whatever, millions of dollars to buy sand. All I think we're trying to say is, we're willing to, to look at a maintenance event with less sand that fits our financial needs as a town, and we'll do the best we can with it. And then the CRC sounds like, to your testimony says, yeah, show us a plan. It doesn't have to have financing to it. I mean, we can show them financing to the plan, but as long as we present the plan to the CRC, it sounds like they're like, oh, look, Oak Island has a plan. They, they're willing to do some maintenance on their beach in, in six years from 2024.
So let's pursue this for just a moment. Councilman Martin makes a point there, I think. If we settled on a financial plan that equaled 21 million, that is the, the ultimately conservative model for us. And you submit this report to the CRC that says you're recommending 33 million, and we're going to get approval with, with the dissonance between what you project, right? Based on your engineering and what we are willing to finance. How does that work?
Councilman Bach, I think, I'm still trying to go back to, the CRC is not looking for a financial commitment. I mean, they're, they're looking for a financial plan to be able to, to meet the, the commitment of maintaining the beach, but it still becomes when the beach needs a re-nourishment, that you have the wherewithal to do the re-nourishment.
I understand that.
And, and so, I mean, I'm, I'm just kind of going to go back to Councilman Martin's point, is, is in my opinion, if you say it's 21 million, and that's what you think it is, and after 750,000 cubic yards is needed, it's a waste of money to spend the 21 million because now you're paying a high mobilization for that. What it does is you would wait, if it's, if the, if it's truly 720, you would wait to, till you hit the trigger, and that would be probably 10 or 11 or 12 years to get to the 1.3, where that level of protection is then lost or about to be lost, where you'd pay one mobilization.
But we're arguing about something that may never happen.
Exactly.
We, we, we don't, yeah, we don't know. It could be better or worse, and I, I can't sit here today and tell you. But, but, but we're not, I mean, to me, we're setting.
Can you not do what he asked? I mean, can you, can you do?
Let me put it in, let me put it in another way. Thank, pardon me, Councilman Bell. If I were sitting on the CRC panel and I got an engineering report that says you need 1.3 million cubic yards of sand and it's going to cost 33, that's what we project as the re-nourishment plan at the end of the, the approval period, and we have a financial plan that says we only have 21 million, I would question that submission. Are you saying that it doesn't matter as long as we have a plan and an amount?
You would not submit the 33 million plan. You would submit a 21 million plan, wouldn't you?
Well, we could submit a 21 million plan and have different triggers, you know, but that, you know, that 21 million is going to equate to a trigger when you lose 720,000 cubic yards.
If, if we lose.
It's always if.
Okay.
I mean, you know, no, I'll, I'll say when you lose 720,000.
And we're okay with the when because we're going to come back with 21 million more six years later.
I understand, but what, what I'm saying is the trigger is going to be set when you lose 720. That could be, based on our projections, three years.
Three years.
And now you're paying a, a, a seven or eight million dollar mobilization every three years. So that's, that's why I'm just saying, it's, it's quantity-based, and when we hit a trigger, not financially, and, and we don't know if that's going to be six years down the road, 10 years down the road when you have 35 million if you have 3.5 million dollars a year. We can't say that. And that's where it's, I, I understand you guys are in a difficult spot, but likewise, we're, we're just trying to project what those losses are going to be. That's all we're, we're trying to put forth.
Well, what I'm hearing is we're communicating that we believe a, a maintenance plan could be presented to the CRC with a slower volume projection that we can demonstrate to the CRC is, is fundable. We, we can have $21 million knowing that it only buys us a, a smaller volume of sand, which is a moving target. I, I get that, right? But you keep repeating back to us that your plan sounds like the only option, and I think what we're trying to say is, we want a different plan. We, we don't want a $34 million, 1.3 million cubic yard maintenance plan. We want a $21 million, 750,000 cubic yard maintenance plan, and we understand that may not get us to seven years, but it could actually extend beyond seven years. Because, and, and I don't mean to bring this up in ill will, but this is why I voted against moving forward with this $40 million beach plan last year in, in January. I think I was the only council member to vote against it because I couldn't wrap my head around spending $40 million for 1.6 million cubic yards to re-nourish a beach, and then you're telling us every six years, we've got to do it all over again. I, I'm struggling with the fact of every six years, we have to rebuild the beach. That's my problem. And I don't want to commit taxpayer dollars to a plan that says every six years, we're rebuilding the beach. I'm willing to take a chance and see how the erosion works after we build an 80-foot beach or a 90-foot beach, whatever your projections were. I, I'd like to see the actual real-time erosion that occurs, not projections. I'd like to give the taxpayers reassurance that when we do a maintenance plan, the money's already there. I don't want future councils sit here and go, well, we're going to go back to 2021 and look at sand assessment maps and rates and distribution of, of who pays for sand. I, I want to avoid those topics, not just for this council, but future councils, is what we're trying to, we're trying to accomplish, something that is better balanced with the money that we know we can get through current sources. We, we don't want projections that say we're going to go get more tax dollars. We want projections that say, if we continue on the path we have, this is how much money we will have for beach maintenance. Does that make, does that make sense?
Believe me, Councilman Martin, I, I completely understand. I, I mean, I do completely understand. I'm just going back to the engineering side. And, and if we, if, if we want to design a plan around $21 million, we can do that. But what we're going to do is go back and say, okay, at what point, based on historical data, have we lost 750,000 cubic yards? And what's that going to come back and tell us? Four years. And now, now, then you're going to come, and, and nothing, no, I apologize, but then the, the council comes to us and said, well, the, the beach didn't last six years and we didn't save $21 million in four years because we've got 3.5 million a year.
We would not hold you accountable. When, when we make the decision on how a management plan is going to be funded, you are a partner in, in that plan. You will not be held accountable to say, well, it only lasted four years instead of six.
I, I understand, but, but what I'm, what my point is, I, I think is, when we go and, and develop the plan for the CRC, and, you know, we have to provide engineering data to say, these are the background losses, annual background losses on this beach of Oak Island. And so that's going to tell us that we're going to lose in the neighborhood of, you know, close to 200,000 a year, a little less, right? If, I mean, if you read the documents and whatnot. So 21 million is a trigger, and again, I, I, I'm not, you're not committing, I mean, by, by signing up for whatever trigger it might be, you're not committing under this beach management plan, you're not committing, the town can choose to let this plan sunset at any time, full stop. And if you were to do a $21 million plan, what I only warn you against from, from an engineer standpoint and a, and a construction cost standpoint, is half of your budget, $21 million budget is going to be spent towards mobilization of the equipment. So you get, you get $13 million in sand out of your 21 million versus you get 25 million out of your 33. So you don't want to make those events too close apart if you make too small a budget. And, and assuming, this all is under the assumption that our historical rates and the background erosion is, is correct.
All of this, though, follows a $40 million investment.
Correct.
Which takes us into 2030, 31.
So let me ask this question. What is the absolute last date that you could submit for June approval?
There is no history of this with the Coastal Resources Commission because this is the first one to go through the process, but in talking to the Division and Coastal Management staff, we have estimated that there is a minimum six-week prior submission to the Division and Coastal Management, which gives them a month to review the, the plan to prepare their response and their recommendation to it. And then there's a two-week prior to the commission meeting mailout that this would have to meet. So I believe that the meeting in June is June 14th and 15th, if I remember correctly. So you're looking, absolute latest would be beginning of May, plus or minus a day or two.
Okay, so I, I'll only speak for myself. I'm feeling very unsettled about the, the finances here, and I think you understand that, that we have a fiduciary responsibility. I understand you have a responsibility as the provider of our engineering, and it seems to me that what was proposed earlier by one of our citizens is we need to have another meeting, we need to take feedback, we need to say, here's the plan that we believe we can support, here's the risk involved, right? Because there's risk per your analysis. And I think we, we need to clarify exactly what we're doing, which has, I'm not sure the public is completely clear on, this is just a plan, we can walk away from it. which has, I'm not sure the public is completely clear on, this is just a plan. We can walk away from it. And it, it's something that will be decided consecutively over time by councils, right? Because at some point, if there is a negative storm cycle, your proposed number will be woefully inadequate, right? If there are no storms, it'll be exorbitantly expensive. So there's all this uncertainty around it. And I think it doesn't, it doesn't hurt us to take an additional step to think further about it, to clarify these terms to the public. That was a request earlier. And to look at the model that seems to have the, at least at this point, the, the support of council. I, I think that, that would be prudent. And it sounds like the CRC is pretty fluid about their process, right? It's the first time through it and we'd still be in advance of the hurricane season. We have to think about not only the cost, but the 523 homes that are at risk. Knowing that even at that, only a portion of them, if we applied, would be immediately protected. It would be another, to use Councilman Kraft's timeline, another 18 months before we get full protection. So I don't want to delay further. I've already asked for a 900-day delay. But it seems to me it's a little unsettled as to what the risk-reward analysis is for us at 21 million. Obviously, that's a number that we can support because that's a number we straight-line project. But that's far from your number. And I think you can appreciate that, right? So that would be my sense of this because I'm, I'm uncomfortable saying, oh, let's just submit this plan and we'll walk away if it doesn't work and we'll have three years to figure it out. It feels, that feels a little bit too unstable to me at the moment. I only speak for myself.
No, I, Councilmember Block, I, I would agree that there's too many unknowns in the potential makeup of a, of a CRC board in the, in the future and what their position would be. My concern is we, we're being told that we can get out of the plan or the plan doesn't. We won't be held accountable, but I don't, I don't have faith in, in that, in that comment. I, I say that, and that's why I came up with this 21 million dollar plan, because at least I knew if the CRC comes back three years from now and says, well, Oak Island, you said 21 million. We're going to hold, you're now held accountable to that, then, then we can pay that. We're comfortable paying that. You know, i- if, if that board changes and they want to hold us accountable. I do have concerns with continuing to delay. I had made a comment earlier that I would propose that we submit a response, but that we do it based on 21 million dollars for a maintenance program. And I suggested that we move now because it's going to take time for Moffett and Nichol to rework the, the plans and the numbers in order to prepare that response to the CRC. And I'm not sure how long it's going to take them to go back to the drawing board. But I have a feeling if we, if we just open this up for a public hearing in April and, and Moffett Nichol presents, we're going to see what's in this, we're not going to see anything different, Councilmember Block. We're going to see the same thing. And, and we're going to continue to hear them say how, well, funding's not a trigger, but yet funding triggers all of their events and their maintenance plan. So I suggest we, we put on the table that they go rework a plan. I want to see a plan for 21 million dollars. And we're not going to see it if we just keep saying, well, let's come back next month and talk to them again. You're not going to, you're going to see this plan next month. So I say we, we move forward with a response, but we move forward asking for a new plan for the maintenance part. We can't change the beach nourishment. That's already a done deal. We're spending 40 million dollars. That's going to happen, right? But we have a chance right now to change that maintenance program. And we can change it by saying, we want a plan that's funded with 21 million dollars. Show us what that looks like and that's what we want to take to the CRC.
But I can support that, but I still think that we need to have a public meeting and we need to be clear about what all this means, the terminology, the risk-reward. But yes, let's move forward. Let's get a plan for 21 million and see what that looks like. And that should not, I don't want to speak for you gentlemen, that shouldn't be unduly burdensome, right? That's just, you're, you're going to plug different, not going to plug any new assumptions into the attrition rate, right?
That's it. The two feet set by, the two feet erosion's a set number of DCM.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we could do it very quickly.
Okay. That's what I'm asking.
I think we delayed 100 days. We, we need to get something in the, in front of, CRC gave us this dilemma and we're here. So I think we need to give them a plan, the 21 million dollar plan and, and get it in the system.
I, I just, I, I just want to go back and, and instead of spinning our wheels and spending money to, go and develop this plan. But again, as we say, if the erosion rates are set, based on which we have engineering to, to back that up, that all of a sudden, now this six-year maintenance event becomes a four-year maintenance event, or probably a three-year because so much is spent on the mobilization. And now you've got to come up with 21 million every three years. That's what the plan's going to look like.
Yeah, but, but I recall seeing in your material that you've presented to council that you had a, a projection of one storm event that would only require 900,000 cubic yards of sand for six years. And then you had another model that showed two storm events and three storm events. And so, and so your model actually was going in the direction of getting us to only 900,000 cubic yards of, of sand, given a, a trigger or an event that would occur. But you never presented the financing for that.
We can take a more aggressive approach on some of that, but at some point, it's not going to get you down to this 700,000 in six years.
So the question that hasn't been asked is if our historical data projects one set of losses, right? I mean, that number doesn't change. You know, that hindsight is 2020. So that number doesn't change, I don't believe. Am I correct? All right. So if we then submit a plan with triggers that are less than the actual, would that be a plan that would be considered by CRC as an attempt by Oak Island to maintain its beach?
No.
Because that's, that's the question that we're really asking. Set the numbers aside, right? So the, because the trigger isn't numbers. I know that's our concern. But CRC is looking at volume, right? So if we say hindsight being 2020, the loss is X, and we submit Y as a trigger, will they take that as an earnest effort to maintain our beach?
The, the, the trigger is a, a line in the sand, let's call it. It's a level of protection.
It's a volume.
It's, it's a volume which creates a level of protection.
Correct.
So you can say that, you know, this trigger, do you want to go to a five-year? Do you want to go to a 25-year? You can change that, but it doesn't change how much volume is outside of that, which is your additional protection and where you get back to that point. So if you put 700,000 cubic yards outside that line in the sand, then however long it takes for that to erode away and once you reach that trigger, then you've got to replace that 700,000. Or you've got to replace, and, and, and the only thing I'd submit to, to, to you guys, if you make this too small of a quantity, you're going to be paying big mobilization amounts and your overall unit cost of a cubic yard of sand going onto this beach is going to be much higher than if you do a bigger job.
Okay. So I'm, I'm willing to go out on a limb here a little bit. I'll go a little bit more to try to, to try to meet you somewhere where we can, where I can get you to commit to developing a new plan. I don't know where we're going, but I'm trying to get there. So let's go, let's go 24 million. I think we can say, let's shoot for 4 million a year. We'll assume that the accommodation tax is going to do a little bit better than in, in the $2 million range. And let's say we get to 3 million in accommodation tax with our sand tax. So I'm willing to go 4 million a year. That's 24 million dollars. That buys me, guess what? Almost, I'm right at 900,000 cubic yards of sand for 24 million dollars using your current cost numbers. And I know they could change. I know the $18.75 for sand might be a little different than that six years from now. But at 24 million, we're getting close to 900,000 cubic yards of sand, which was one of your projections in your studies that you did. So that tells me 24 million buys us a maintenance plan, does it not? Counsel?
All of these are funny numbers, right? Because they don't map to reality.
But those are realistic numbers.
I, I don't-
But the money numbers, I understand, you're projecting based on what is current, right? As to what we can afford.
I don't want to agree, I don't want to agree to a number that's going to put additional burdens on the taxpayers when it comes time to do the maintenance event. So 24 million does not burden the taxpayer.
Well, what, what, wait a minute, Mr. Hatton? Are you comfortable with 24 million as a fiscally conservative assumption? Okay, fine. Then he is. I trust Mr. Hatton. Let's, do you want to make a motion?
Make the motion, please.
I will make a motion to the best of my wording, which doesn't match it. I would like to move that we approve a beach management plan as a response to the CRC under the funding model of 24 million dollars at the six-year interval to be submitted to the CRC. Is that clear enough, Lisa?
With a 900,000 cubic yards of sand?
I don't think we can project cubic volumes of sand because-
That price will change.
That price could change. I think we commit 24 million dollars as our six-year interval for a maintenance plan.
Subject to review.
Subject to a new, some new documentation from engineering and a review by council.
Thank you.
And, and get it submitted to CRC.
With the intent to quickly get it submitted to the CRC.
We need to review it first.
Yeah, we'll review it in April. I think April we can review and get it submitted.
So your numbers are 2.5 million on accommodation tax and 1.5 million on sand tax. And we're about that right now.
Yep.
But that doesn't preclude us from seeking other funding sources.
Oh, absolutely not.
Absolutely. I mean, that's an, that's a mission imperative. That is an obligation on the part of council and the town.
Nor does it prevent us from seeking alternatives along the journeys as well, so.
Good, because that's important. The, here's the one, well, we've got a motion on the table. Is there further discussion? You probably should have started with that.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I just want to make sure our engineering firm has, understands that motion and needs any clarification before a vote's taken. Do you under, do you understand?
Very clear.
What we need, okay. Thank you.
The motion was to, started out to be approving the beach management plan as a response to the CRC with a funding, funding model of 24 million dollars for the maintenance plan. And then it was added to, subject to additional documentation and subject to review by council in April. So if it's, it's a motion to approve with additional review?
I, I'm not going to vote to approve something I haven't seen.
Okay, so that's not-
Can we restate the motion? And may I give it a shot to help a little bit?
Go for it.
It's the, a motion to direct our engineer to come back with a 24 million dollar model over six years for the council with the backup data for a council to consider at the April 2023 meeting. And if, if then approved at that meeting to forward to the CRC. Is that, glad to him?
I have a question because, again, we have fixed posts at some point and you're asking us to go back and, and redo a plan for 24 million for six years. I don't know that that's what that's going to end up.
You mean the cycle?
The cycle.
You showed in your, one of your models, a six-year storm event for 900,000 cubic yards. Did you not?
Yes, Councilman Martin, I, I just said, I don't know that it's going to be, I can't fix the financial and fi- I'm, I'll, we'll go back and look at it, a more aggressive approach. And if it's 900,000, I'm just not going to state tonight that 24 million will get us six years. I don't know until we redo the plan.
So you can't just go back to your projection that was in your presentation last year for 900,000 cubic yards and say, that's the line we're going to develop now?
We'll take a look, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. I'm just-
I understand what, what you're saying, Sam. 21 million, you didn't think we could get beyond three or four years. 24 million, we might not be able to get beyond four or five years is what you're afraid of.
It, it could be, but we're going to take a more aggressive approach at it and look at it, you know, on the recommendation of Councilman Martin that will, you know, probably, I, I know we are conservative that we have an extra storm in the, in our current, you know, so we'll be able to take that out and, and look at some things. You know, the, you know, the intent was to make sure that we could, you know, we had enough to make sure we are conservative on, we were meeting these trigger events and we had enough money in case things got a little worse than, than what the true hein cast. And nobody, just like there's predictions of recessions, nobody's predicting the, the weather to get any better either.
Yeah, I understand that.
Councilman Martin, I think you got us as close as you can get us, sir.
But I can vote.
Councilman Kraft, I'm not trying to-
And I'm not, and I'm not trying to push back. I just want to be clear that what we're, what we're tasked to do, that we can bring you back what you want.
Yeah, I was trying to hurry up and flip through the packet to see if you included the view of your, of your lines that you showed the one storm event at 900,000 cubic yards and two storms at, you know, now we're up into the millions of cubic yards of sand. So that's why I just, and that was on a six-year interval. So that's why I don't understand why you can't just go back to that line that for 900,000 cubic yards, that was on a six-year interval and say, here's, here's your plan.
All I'm saying, that's, that's fine. All I'm, all I'm saying is that we will go back with the 24, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to make the plan fit 24 million and six years. It's going to be the data that'll tell us and guide us and we'll, we'll look at a more aggressive look at it and, and go back to that 900,000. If that fits six years, that fits six years. That's my only point. I, I just don't want to say we're going to make numbers fit.
I understand.
Fair enough.
Can we clarify the motion that's, that, counsel?
Sorry.
You made, you revised the motion. What is the motion?
Your motion was, was different than Councilmember Martin's.
I will amend it to, based on, I will amend it to Mr. Eas.
To direct the Moffett Nichols, to the extent they can, the numbers work, to come back with a six-year maintenance program at 24 million dollars.
Is that the motion on the floor, counsel?
Is that, but that's what I'm, Sam. To the extent it, the numbers work, 24 million dollars, six-year interval. Is that clear enough?
Clear enough.
For you guys?
Absolutely.
Yes, that's what I propose, Mr. Box.
I'll second that motion as revised by council.
Yeah, I amend it.
All in favor? That's unanimous. I just want to make this one comment. And that is what, one, I appreciate everyone's thoughtfulness and considering alternative, more cost-effective approaches to the beach. But do want to point out that there's so much that will happen around the FY 24, 25 plan and all of the unpredictable things. The one disappointment that I have is we are not bringing the public along with us. So we've gotten to a point where we, as a council, are comfortable enough to have an informed discussion about the beach. But the people whom this affects, being our residents and owners, we're not bringing them along with us. And I think that's a real shame. So I appreciate the urgency that we have to get a beach management plan in place by the June meeting. I think that's a mission imperative. But at some point in the near future, I would like for council to consider a special meeting that, with your assistance, Sam and Doug, that will lay out in a thoughtful manner what it is that we're considering. Because this plan is not in isolation. It is in respect to the CRC. But it's not in terms of developing a responsible approach for preserving our beach. And that's the discussion and the vision that I feel that our- And that's the discussion and the vision that I feel that our, the town people need so that they can at least understand the conversations that are happening here. I just want to put that on the table, I'm not expecting a motion, but I think this needs to happen fairly soon, because in June, we're going to be considering the other plan. And without something between now and then that paints a picture that is understandable by the average guy, you know, me before I took office and had to start learning about all of this, then we're not doing our job as council members. And I just want to put that in front of everyone to consider. So I appreciate that. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next on the agenda is five point two, consideration of report from the UDO audit from Wes McLeod and from the Cape Fear Council of Government.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. I, I have a couple slides here tonight. I'm not going to take too much of your time, but certainly I'll be available to answer all the questions, if any you may have.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sure, thanks, Brian. My name's Wes McLeod, I'm the Local Government Services Director for Cape Fear Council of Governments. We were, we contracted with the town to provide a development code audit that worked with staff and planning board. I'm just going to go through, provide a brief overview of the process, and then hit on the ten priorities that came out of that twenty-six-page report. So first item of business was meeting with staff and both the planning board to determine some generalized issues and needs. Following that, we conducted a detailed review of all the administrative sections of the town's unified development ordinance, all the approval procedures, definitions, permitted uses, dimensional standards, and key development standards. And we also reviewed the town's relevant past plans and policies. Third, we actually put together the, prepared the audit document, which includes an assessment of every single section of the UDO and every single section of your general code that relates to land development. And so you have chapters in your general code concerning tree preservation, for example, and temporary uses that we reviewed as well. We presented the findings to the planning board through detailed recommendations and identification of concerns. In total, we had over three hundred recommendations, or frankly, considerations, and compiled a twenty-six-page report. The planning board is, was given that report as we moved through the process. We reviewed all the findings with planning board and staff, and we identified a number of items for immediate change. In total, we had six meetings held with the planning board, there's two members here, and I thank you both for participating in that. Those were not easy meetings. They were oftentimes two hours and sometimes longer of, of really, really detailed review of the ordinance, questions, and understanding some of the underlying issues that we were tasked with, with addressing. And with that, I'm going to jump right into these, these number of priorities. It, it's, if you, if you take this twenty-six-page report that we gave to you, it's got a ton of recommendations, consideration, thoughts, et cetera. What we've attempted to do between Matt, myself, and my feedback from the planning board, is pull together ten overarching priorities that I feel are critical for the town moving forward. Some of these are, could be considered to be rather simple items, others are more long-term policy decisions. First, clarify the location of accessory structures. Conflicting provisions allow for the placement of detached garages and carports forward of the front facade of the principal structure. And you've got other provisions in your ordinance that say accessory structures have to be behind the front facade. So every day, this continues to be in place, and folks are putting in these structures forward to the front facade, potentially you're creating a series of nonconformities moving forward. Consolidate and clarify your setback exceptions. There are a number of exceptions to the required setbacks throughout the UDO. Some of the exceptions are in conflict with one another, and I believe some of this has been, been addressed. But a thorough review and consolidation of all the setback exceptions throughout the entirety that ordinance needs to be put together. Comprehensive evaluate the parking requirements within the community business zoning district. Your current parking requirements may restrict future redevelopment and/or changes of use for existing buildings. It, it is important to balance these regulations so that you're ensuring that adequate parking is provided off-site, but also encouraging redevelopment and reuse of your existing building stock, because I know that you, you folks want to see your storefronts full. And so it's determining, for example, okay, well, is the requirement for these folks to put a number of parking spaces off-site going to preclude them from opening a business? Is that, is, is that a problem for us? Or we've say, hey, they don't have to provide any parking, open up, but then maybe they're going to be parking on adjacent owners' businesses and, and, and other things that, that can transpire when you have relaxed parking requirements. So it's trying to strike the appropriate balance based on a policy decision from the town. Update the development review process to allow for more subdivisions and site plans to be approved by the UDO administrator and/or the planning board. I would consider removing, I would think it'd be important to consider removing all town council approval responsibility for administrative decisions. I would anticipate a substantial subdivision, a substantial number of subdivision approval requests is likely to occur in the coming years. Relieving the town council of this responsibility will allow for more efficient governance, reduce staff time, and a more streamlined development approval process. You all are no longer just an island, right? Now you've got, you've got large tracts of land, and you're going to have substantial development approvals that are coming forth. And remember, these administrative approval types, if the applicant meets the terms of the ordinance, the town's bound to require it, to approve it. And so you may find yourself in a position where, one, your agenda may be full of eighteen subdivision approval proposals, and your meetings may be twelve-hour, twelve-hours long, I mean, that's a hyperbolic statement. But two, you may have folks that are telling you, you need to deny this, but you really don't have another choice. And so I will say this priority comes in part due from staff, and my, my recommendation, planning board does not necessarily want some of this responsible, some of this responsibility, but I think that it's going to be prudent for the town at some point for you all to have less of these types of development approvals. Modernize the table of permitted uses. In general, I, I think you should reduce the number of similar uses in the table. There's, you know, accounting agencies, advertising agencies, just call it office use. Also, ensure that all the uses in the table have an applicable definition contained in the ordinance. Comprehensive review all signage requirements and consider modifications to support the historical use applications while considering modernization of size and sign types for future use. Freestanding pole signs are becoming no longer used in, in a lot of jurisdictions throughout North Carolina. However, they, they sort of have a customary beach theme to them, so there's really a lot of work that needs to be looked into, how you want to handle signage moving forward. It's not a simple thing, just to say, we want a monument sign, that's a sign that sits on the ground, it's longer horizontally than it is vertically. Evaluate the various positives and negatives regarding future street dedication and ownership, and establish a policy for public versus private streets within future subdivisions. In addition, establishing clear and enhanced street construction standards to reduce future maintenance liability for any new streets, whether the streets are public or private. We have seen across the region, even if the streets are private, they may be constructed inadequately or constructed adequately but not properly maintained, and then those property owners that live in that subdivision come knocking and, and ask the governing board to take them over. So that, that's becoming an increasing liability across our, our region for our local governments. Eight, incorporate temporary use and business license requirements and tree preservation provisions that are currently in your general code into the UDO. Last two, consolidate the zoning district dimensional requirements. Most ordinances have an overarching table of, of dimensional standards to convey all respective setback height and lot size requirements for each zoning district. This should replace the repetitive and unnecessary listing of each respective zoning district's various dimensional requirements. And then lastly, review the commercial recreation zoning district uses, including the availability of private swimming pools and commercial uses. Given the interest in residential development in the CR district, consider rezoning CR areas to an applicable residential zoning district where single-family residential development is currently located. There's a significant area of CR, commercial recreation, in the Yopon Beach section. Most of it has been developed as single-family, but there's some, some, there's a concern there, at least it's at least worthy of review for, for potential to rezone it to a more traditional residential zoning district. All right. That was a ton of information provided to you, and I fully understand that you guys have just been engaged in, in quite a bit of a dialogue during the former agenda items. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about all of that material. And I thank you again for allowing us to work with the town and the planning board on this important issue. It's been a pleasure working with them.
Wes, number four, did we not already address that at one of our meetings a couple months ago?
I believe there's been, and thank you, Mr. Craft, there's been a number of changes that have been brought to you. This would not be, I don't believe this would be one of them unless I'm mistaken. Right now, you guys are still responsible for approving major subdivision preliminary plaits, and I believe final plaits, I'm not, I don't recall specifically, but I'd have to pull up the order. And major site plans. So this would be where potentially it would be a modification to say that planning board would be responsible for major subdivision preliminary plaits, or possibly staff, depending on the size of the subdivision. I, I was here, I know for one that, I believe it was the Turtle Creek on Sixty-Fourth, that's an example of the subdivision that came to you all. They met the terms of the ordinance, there were folks that were mad, understandably so, but you guys didn't have any choice in the matter, right? You, you, they met the terms of the ordinance, you're bound to approve it. So you can imagine, say your meeting has six of those on your agenda, your agenda really starts to be more of checking the box on development approvals versus policy governance, things that are perhaps more critical to accomplishing your mission. That's just me talking, though, I just point, point that out.
Wes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for working so constructively with our planning board and our planner. If you had to pick the top three in, in the ten items that you presented, what would they be? Because I know that these are not in rank order, correct?
No, sir, not necessarily. I think that, I, I think that one that we just mentioned, you know, those develop, really getting a handle on those development review processes, while it may not seem critical at this moment, when subdivision proposals start rolling in the door, I think we'll, it will seem so.
David, didn't that used to be what was in the old ordinance?
Ma'am?
Wasn't that the way it was in the old ordinance?
Yes.
It was never preliminary was planning board? No.
Okay. Yeah. And, and that has been customary for a lot of our beach towns, because you were just on the island. But when folks started jumping over into the mainland, and now you're starting to have more subdivision proposals, it's, you're, it's sort of a different situation. You know, this is a simple one, but really clarifying what you're going, how you're going to handle those accessory structures, I, I think that's number one on that list. And, and Councilman Bach, this is really, it's a tough question to answer for me, because it, this is really up to you guys to figure out what's more, more important. I think from, along the lines of the subdivision proposals and development that's going to occur in the future, getting a clear handle on streets, are they going to be public? Are they going to be private? How are they going to be constructed? How are you going to accept them? It will, will be very important moving forward. Now, that, that's more perhaps a longer-term item, but I think it'll be critical to this town in, in terms of maintaining your infrastructure. And that, that is number.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, yes, ma'am. And then, you know, I think number three has to do with, it specifically talks to, 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 speaks to parking requirements in your CB zoning district, but I believe that this town, and this is Councilman Bach, based on some of my understanding of you, you all's vision, is getting, really understanding what can be done to help ensure that our, our businesses are as successful as they can be, and there continues to be a flow of new businesses coming in here day to day. And so parking is one of those items, but there's several other development standards that can be viewed.
Thank, thank you for giving us a sense of your top four. Appreciate that.
So what, I don't know whether to address this to you, Wes, or to Matt. What, what is the plan for moving forward on these ten items, given any level of priority that might be assigned?
Well, I'll provide a, a brief answer for you, and then I'll let Matt weigh in. Ultimately, it's up to this, this council and, and town manager, how you want to proceed, you know, do you want to haul off and, and work on these tasks? I mean, these are, this would be a fairly large undertaking, for example, if you take on all these tasks. And so you need to view that as one, are, are we going to proceed with a rather hefty overhaul of the ordinance? Or are there policy implications here that maybe the town proceeds with looking at a land use plan or growth management plan first, and maybe fix some of the minor things that are in the, that have been identified? So I, I can't necessarily answer that question for you, it's, it's kind of the directive would come from, from this council.
Yeah, I mean, it's my opinion that Wes hit the nail on the head there. You know, the, anything that the council wants to take out of this report and recommend that the planning board start working on, or if there's any other recommendations that you have, you know, these are recommendations. There's obviously, you might have your own priorities as a council that you'd like the planning board to start working on, but this is a jumping off point to start that conversation and figure out if you do have any priorities out of this list or any other priorities that you want the planning board to go ahead and start on. As Wes mentioned, some of these items here, it would be my anticipation that they could be very lengthy in just doing one of them. So for example, while it wasn't on his top, of, top of his list, if the council chose to direct the planning board to work on modernizing the table of uses and making sure that we have. have an applicable definition for each thing, that would take several months at a bare minimum to even get that in front of you. So keep that in mind, that some of these are longer, more heftier items. So it's really the pleasure of the board. If you want us to work on one or some, or take on some smaller things at first, while you consider maybe updating a land use plan or a growth management plan, something like that, it really is the purview of this board to direct us as to how you want to proceed on a new policy, if anything.
So where I appreciate that the land use plan does need to be updated, I'm wondering whether there aren't other things that we could get out of the way volume-wise while we tackle, or while you tackle, some of the heftier issues to come to us. And I understand that as you went through what I've termed the Phase One U D O audit, that there were notes made about a number of other ordinances that you want to come back and visit. And I'm wondering if council could have the advantage of that list of notes, because perhaps there are things that are embedded in there that we might think are important and could be disposed of more readily before we were to tackle something like the land use plan, which would take a ramp up. The other thing I want, would like for you to consider, so when need be, council meets as often as necessary, and I know that you've done two meetings a month as you've worked through the audit, and would hope that you and the planning board would consider doubling down on meetings to get more done in a timeframe that would allow whatever ordinances we want to tackle, that council decides to tackle, done, so that we can move on to either some of the more robust considerations among the top 10, or begin to work on the land use plan, which, again, or at least ramping up to a land use plan.
Sure. So I would look for the consensus of council for any direction that comes out of this. So if that's something that you want to take on as a group, I definitely want to hear from everybody. I would say that you're right, Wes had, as he mentioned, 26 pages and 300 recommendations out of his report. So as we went through, the planning board helped me make mention of things that were policy changes that would take further discussion versus the kind of small cleanup changes that we've been forwarding you over the past several months, and that we're hoping to wrap up next month as well. But certainly, as I mentioned, I prefer to take any direction that the consensus of the board feels.
I just want to add that there were things that came before council in the form of, you know, asking for exceptions or variances, well, not formally variances, because that would go to the Board of Adjustment, that seemed to me could be readily dispensed with and allow the public to move on instead of waiting months for consideration.
I'd be happy to know what those are, ma'am. I'd be happy to work on them.
The one that comes to mind is the fence issue for through lots.
For through lots?
Yeah. So that was just one, one request that we didn't vote on because, or we didn't accept because of setting precedent, and we hadn't really talked about a lot that goes through the entire block, and fence requirements for front, back, side, is how I recall. But it just seems to be a much simpler thing to be able to dispense with.
Well, the ordinance is very clear about what those requirements are now. What you had before you at that time was a request for a text amendment to change those rules to allow additional fencing on a through lot. So that, those are, like I said, we use those existing setbacks every day. So they certainly, as you mentioned, could have applied for a variance, and in this instance, the applicant chose to come before council and ask for a policy change to actually change the setback requirement for that fence for an entire zoning district, which is an option that anyone as a citizen has, anyone can apply to change the ordinance.
If I miscast that, I apologize.
No, I just wanted to make sure we were talking about the same thing.
I would suggest to council that we just table any decisions on these 10 items until further consideration can be made and discussions amongst us, and I'd like to see the notes as well. I don't feel that there's an urgency to try to take action on these tonight. So I'm in favor of just tabling and revisiting.
I would like to say what Matt was talking about a while ago, about having definitions for every use, and going through the uses, and putting those together. Until you do that and have a definition for each use that's listed, it makes your job harder.
Yeah, I mean, Councilman Bach, if you had asked me that same question, number five probably would have been on my top list, because it makes my job that much easier if we have a modern table of uses and everything's clearly defined. It takes some of the, not guesswork, but it takes some of the uncertainty out of my job, for sure. But that's a long process, you know, that will take several months, as I mentioned, to even get to you. So I want you to be cognizant of that, if that's something that the board wants the planning board to start on, that's going to be their only staff-generated work for several months, and it's going to take several months to get there. So I want you to have a realistic expectation of what it's going to be like moving forward, unless the board directs the planning board to meet more often.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I believe most of... Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there follow-up action? So, Mr. Martin, we heard from you, we heard from Councilman Bell. Are we directing, or are we tabling this issue till later time?
No, we're going later time.
Yeah, I'm good with bringing it back at a later date.
Okay. Just asking for clarity. Discussion of previously approved amendments for right-of-way ordinances is next. Thank you, Wes.
I would like to revisit the ban on right-of-way parking north of Oak Island Drive. We'd often said that as we go through our paid parking starting in April, we're going to realize different things that need to be tweaked as we go along, and I would like to address the right-of-way parking on the north side of Oak Island Drive, even before paid parking starts. The south side has paid parking, and those people don't park in the right-of-way, they go to parking lots as they go to the ocean. People on the north side don't have an ocean, don't have any paid parking areas, and I don't think anybody is going to park in the right-of-way, any day tripper is going to park in the right-of-way on Holly Drive and carry two chairs, a cooler, and an umbrella all the way to the beach. And I also think that eight or 10 day trippers, or whoever, may cheat the system and park in the right-of-way on the north side of Oak Island Drive, but creating a hardship for half of our residents just to stop eight or 10 people from cheating our system, in my opinion, is very unfair to the people that live on the north side of Oak Island Drive. The people on the south side of Oak Island Drive, that right-of-way parking is stopped to send people to the paid parking lots as they walk to the ocean. Nobody, very few people, especially somebody in my physical condition, is going to walk from Holly Drive all the way to the ocean. So page four, section 2842, 1B, I would just like to change one line in there where it says, unless otherwise specifically authorized by this chapter, parking in the right-of-way is prohibited from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., from April 1st to September 30th, on the south side of Oak Island Drive. That would allow, and if we, we don't know what all we're going to walk into in April, May, June, July, and if we have to tweak it and clean it up, we'll realize it. But to wait a year to go ahead and change it, I think it's creating too much of a hardship for the people on the north side of Oak Island Drive. So I would like to have discussion and see where we are on that.
What was the number of that?
That number is 2842, it's on page 109, 2842, 1B.
Thank you.
The 1B there is only talking about, you want to allow the parking there, so you would strike that.
Okay.
You want to, because that's the area on the side that you're trying to allow the parking.
Okay.
So you would strike that sentence, is what I would suggest. And then on the vendor enforcement zone, you're already saying the same thing that you just said about it would be in that area, and leave it there as stated, for that area to still be enforced during those hours and months.
So we strike all of that section?
So you would strike, in the police enforcement zone, enforcement of parking ordinance in this zone is responsible, the town police department, A would stay, B would be the one that you would like to strike, to, is where you created the ordinance to not allow it. So if you strike that, then you're putting that back, you're not inhibiting any kind of parking.
Okay.
But then you come down, we have nothing in here currently stating the 24 hours, or 48 hours, or 72 hours, that we may need to bring you something back. If you would like to ask staff to bring some ordinance changes back, or whatever your recommendations are currently, then we can bring it back for your approval with the understanding of what you're doing is, will go into effect on April 1st.
So...
Go ahead.
The night is already long. I'm going to make this quite simple. When council originally discussed this, the majority of council, on basis of three to two, preferred not to have a island-wide ban on right-of-way. So it is not a surprise that we are revisiting this, as Councilman Kraft said, this is part of the process. I would say several things, though, from a policy standpoint, and from an enforcement standpoint, it makes sense to me to have one standard across the island. You don't split the island into two different zones, it makes it more complex, it raises questions of equity, it's messier. But there is a rationale to do that, which Councilman Kraft has given. I also think that we need to protect the taxpayers who are immediately adjacent to Oak Island Drive. I believe there will be more than a few people attempting to park there, not to mention the Airbnbs and VRBOs that are already in the wooded zone. And lastly, this council, the council before it, and I suspect councils before the last two, have struggled to enforce right-of-way ordinances and to get the right-of-way cleaned up, and it's just been an ongoing issue. So having said that, and having had a long series of conversations with my colleagues, especially Councilman Blaylock, who is not here tonight, and I know that he believes that we should go slowly, and that we should do one section at a time, and he's comfortable with two zones. So I'm going to support this with this proviso, that I would recommend that the enforcement personnel that were originally going to patrol, police, if you will, whatever the correct term is, the northern section, north of Oak Island Drive, for parking violations, will now enforce our current ordinances for obstacles, safety, and that they will endeavor to open every street end which is public right-of-way on yachting. So if that's acceptable to the majority, I know it's acceptable to Councilman Blaylock, but he's not here, that would be my suggestion for improving the motion.
And I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Councilman Bach, I appreciate your comments and the direction. I would add to that, I would go back to town manager David Kelly's comment about, I don't think this reverts us back, and correct me if I'm wrong, this does not revert us back to the previous 72-hour right-of-way law. However, it does still maintain the no boats parking in the right-of-way. Is that correct? Because that's a separate ordinance. A separate ordinance about boats parking in the right-of-way. So... That's correct, yes. So my question to this council is, do we want to bring back the 72-hour rule that was in the previous ordinance for the north, as an effort with this? To your point, Councilman Bach, it would provide law enforcement some additional guidance on how to enforce the ordinance if we revert back. If we don't specify that, what's the rule? There's 24/7 with no restrictions?
So on, now I have to tell me on the boats, but on the boat area, right now, they have to be hooked up to a vehicle to tow them, they can't be left alone. So the ones that are left alone currently in the street ends are in violation.
Right.
To start off with. I don't know if there, in that ordinance, there's a time limit on that, it just says they need to be hooked up to the truck. I don't think it said for a period of 24, 48, or 72 hours.
Okay.
But I'd have to defer back.
Councilman Martin's wanting to know about cars.
Right, but now for cars, if we strike enforcement, or if we strike the no parking in the right-of-way for the north, how long will cars be permitted to park in the right-of-way? Is it, does, do we go back to 72 hours? Do we have to state that?
I don't think there's any kind of time limit, the way the ordinance was changed to reflect that.
All right, can we just take the ordinance back for the north side the way it was?
Matt, can you come over here a minute? So we talked about this today, asking...
And then that could be your, that could be your first order of business, Matt, is figure out how we can...
So the, to your question, if you made the change to just strike that section, there would be essentially, like you mentioned, 24/7 parking, there would be no restriction. So if the board wants there to be some type of restriction for how long you can be parked in a vehicle, not a trailer, that's not hooked up to a vehicle, it would be prudent to try to make that decision and amend the, and as Mr. Kelly said, we could, whatever you recommend, we could write up for you and have at the next meeting, I guess, was his intention there, yeah.
Because my point, my point is, and Councilman Kraft, I appreciate your underestimating eight to 10 cars cheating the system. I, with Councilmember Bach, feel like we will see far more than eight to 10 cars cheating the system. I think you'll see from 39th Street to 43rd Street, the north side of Oak Island Drive is going to become an all-day-long parking lot. I think property owners in the northeast sections that are close to beach accesses are going to find people parking in the right-of-way in front of their homes, and we're going to get those phone calls. So I think we need to put a time limit on that, like we used to have, the 72 hour.
Like the 72 hour, but...
What we had before.
Yes.
What we had before, right.
That's what it's there for. But let me tell you about smart people who live on the north side of Oak Island Drive. If they see that happening to them, day after day after day, the smart people are going to park their own cars in that right-of-way, and that'll stop that real quick.
So on the hours that we need to look at, Chief Marsh, can you come up a minute?
Touche.
So enforcement in the right-of-way, is there an hour limit that works better for the police department for enforcement? I know 72 hours, the people that are on now, they'd be working the two days, so they wouldn't see a third day. And if somebody came on, they wouldn't know what was parked.
That's correct. So the way the 72 hours is now, if someone parks in the right-of-way for 72 hours, and then they move their car a foot or two feet, then they're in compliance with the town ordinance. I'm not sure putting a timeframe on it will make that much of a difference, because if we were really keeping track of it, somebody'd have to be going around marking tires. And I'm not sure that that's the business that we want to get into, is marking tires on, in the right-of-way.
Okay. And so I understand that's complete fair. So I just want to clarify that this would mean someone could park in the right-of-way on the north side of Oak Island Drive and leave their car there. He's, we're seeing no 72 hours indefinitely.
The 24 hours would be easier for him to monitor, because he's... The 24 hours would be easier for him to monitor, because usually.
Okay, now we're.
It would be easier.
The person would see the car the day, then he'd be back.
But even a limit of some sort.
I agree.
24 hours.
So let's say, do we want to say 24? Do we want to try 24? Can we agree to 24? Okay. Then my last, my last caveat is if this thing goes off the rails and is utter chaos with people parking on the north side to cheat the system, I would like the assurance that this council would come back and not wait a year, that we would come back immediately, even if it's mid-season, i- if it's July, I want us to come back and revisit this. If, if this goes through this evening, we must be proactive in revisiting this decision and not say we're going to wait till next year and see how it goes, because we could see this thing go off the rails very badly with.
I don't, I don't disagree with that.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to that, but I'm the eternal optimist. Uh, those people need a chance to use their right-of-ways on the north side of Oak Island Drive.
Well, I'll say this, I think we're all in agreement, and we've, we've said from the beginning that this, at least in the first year, is something that needs constant review, revision and, and reexamination. And so if we're all committed to that, I'm confident, I mean, I want to say if, if men were angels, but I won't go there. Let's be sure that if something happens, we can correct it, that's all.
And just one more thing quickly to the gentleman, I don't know if you're still here, that asked about parking in your driveway, yes. E- even in the south, where there will be no right-of-way parking, if you're parked in your driveway, you have to have access to your property. You will be allowed to park in your driveway, and you won't get a violation, you won't be ticketed, so.
So Matt, do you, are you able to bring us a language that we kicked around?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly saying yes, so yes.
Yes, we, we can, we can bring you something back.
So do we need a motion to direct staff?
No, ma'am.
Just do a consensus, if that's a consensus of council.
We did.
Is there a consensus of council? Uh, next on the item is discussion and consideration of proposed code of ethics. There's also, uh, committee policies, which is actually the longer document. Disclosure has been taken off the table. And the last document is the town council code of ethics, which is not really in discussion, it was there for reference. So we've been discussing first tonight, instead of doing a motion, uh, do we want to continue in that pattern? And, um, thoughts on what's in front of this? I know Mr. Martin has some modifications he wants to, us to consider.
I believe it was already clarified that the policy would just go into the handbook, it's not changing our ordinance, uh, so I was okay with that. My only concern was on the, uh, the new application form.
Uh-huh.
Um, I would recommend that we strike the word male and female and age. I don't think we need to collect gender and age information, um, on the application.
Page 121.
Page 121, yes.
Did you notice the attorney's head just spun around?
Yeah. So it's one, two, three, four, five.
Or 101.
Six items down.
I agree with Councilman Martin.
Um, and then, um, I only, I had, uh, I had concerns, our previous application said, uh, years resident in Oak Island, this one just says years living in Oak Island, so our ordinance still specifies that you must be a resident within the town limits. Uh, so we might want to clarify, get rid of the word years living in Oak Island, maybe say years as a resident in Oak Island. And then my last, uh, request is for the references, it says list three local personal references with phone numbers. Um, some people may have valuable experience, either professionally or as a volunteer, that are outside of this area, and so I would, I would want them to.
Page 121.
121.
Now to the bottom.
I, I would want them to have the opportunity to list a reference that might be applicable to their experience that's not in this local area. So I would just like to strike the word local out of the, the, for references, to collecting references, to give people an opportunity to, to put down references from other areas where their experience may be relevant.
They worked on the plant wreck board in Tupelo, Mississippi.
Exactly.
Oh, your friend.
Yep, so their reference would be in Mississippi, not here locally, so.
Correct.
Yep.
Comments, any other changes?
I'll make a comment about something that Councilmember Martin just said, huh? On that same page, on 121. Um, I wonder if it, if it's okay with council, if we would just spacing-wise move the, the references down so they would print on the second page, so that council could have that information, but it wouldn't go in an agenda packet that's online, so that people listed as references don't have their phone numbers online.
I like that idea.
Good point.
Yep, we'll take that.
Also, we had talked about, and I guess it's in here, I just can't find it right now, getting the names of the applicants 30 days prior instead of one week prior.
Do you want to explain?
Yes, so, um, what we could do is, uh, the example would be what's coming up, actually. The, um, environmental advisory committee would have the next appointments made, and those would be in June. Normally, we would advertise in May and then have those on the June, um, council agenda. So instead, we would advertise in April, but then still have them on the June council agenda. So we would have an earlier deadline to receive the applications, and that information will be available to council roughly a month ahead of the meeting.
So that's selection 2B. All applications for a particular position must be submitted to the town clerk by the date specified in the advertisement. So that gives, um, Lisa the ability to, uh, set that date with what Bill has asked for.
And we would get it early enough in case any of the council members chose to reach out to those people, have a conversation with them.
Any other questions, discussion, is there a motion?
I think the motion put, uh, whole business item 5.4 before council.
With the changes mentioned.
Changes noted.
And, and we accepted one of those documents categorically from that item.
Yes, the disclosure document was removed.
So that's gone, and then with the changes that have been proposed?
Yes.
Uh, most, Councilman Martin and Ms. Stites?
Clerk has them. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Uh, next page, 128, um, consideration of rec center use agreement.
Get one.
I did.
Um, consideration.
It'd be shoreline, page 127.
Yeah, shoreline.
I did, I'm sorry. Consideration of a resolution in support of maintaining a living shoreline project at Veterans Park.
I have one more clarification for the last item.
Yes.
Um, again, Councilmember Martin, you'd mentioned that this wouldn't involve changing the ordinances. I think that there might be one ordinance amendment that would be necessary, because the policy says that no, um, member can serve more than two consecutive terms. Right now, we only have that for the planning board. So I just want to know that it's all right, staff will review and see if there are any ordinance amendments that are necessary based on that language and bring it back to you.
There isn't an ordinance that actually says unlimited terms.
Uh, amended.
So that would be changed.
Well, it doesn't, I just wanted to, I just wanted you to be aware that we may bring ordinance amendments back to you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Right, yeah. I mean, for purposes of the night, I think the motion's in order, but if we determine that there does need to be an ordinance change, we'll bring that back.
Bring it back.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Consideration of a resolution in support of maintaining a living shoreline.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution in support of the maintaining a living shoreline for Betson's Park.
Okay.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Hurry it down.
Consider of rec center use agreement.
I'd like for this to be moved to budget workshops.
I agree.
I agree.
I'm not sure why this item is here. It's, it will be included in the budget, correct?
Yes, sir. The only reason why we brought it back was because it was an item that was discussed last year and asked to be brought to you. So they have finally made a decision, and it's been prepared, but we can discuss it during the budget.
I really think it would be more appropriate in the budget process.
Thank you.
Is that a motion, Council?
Uh, it's a motion.
I second that motion.
All in favor? I'm not sure we needed a motion, but.
Well, we got it. Heather, thank you for staying so late.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Heather.
And just a quick comment on that, though, since Heather's still here. If you could just, um, maybe ask the advisory board to put some little more energy into trying to reconcile some of the points that were made during public comment, um, maybe if we can get those cleaned up when it comes to the budget, it'll be a little bit easier to establish fees. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consideration of a policy to allow remote participation for members of certain advisory boards. This would exclude council and the board of adjustment.
Yes, correct, and, and we had this discussion some time ago. Um, this proposal codifies the advice from council about how this would work. And I would say, given our experience in COVID, uh, and given the familiarity that most of us have with working online on occasion, or perhaps daily at one point, um, this makes sense for people who are volunteers as opposed to elected officials or board of adjustment people. So I asked Lisa, and she was kind enough to codify, but our council stipulated are the conditions under which that, that would occur, hence the policy.
My only concern for the policy is with the 24-hour requirement. My question is, does that give Matt and the, uh, person with the request, um, adequate time to ensure that there's, uh, a viable, uh, video and audio connection, using whatever mechanism that individual would be, uh, connecting with? So.
I'm perfectly amenable to 72.
What if they're sick and they still want to participate?
Well, the request has to come at least 24 hours, but the question would be, so it requires video and audio connection, and, um, would that give adequate time for Mike to work with them to make sure that they have a viable connection?
Well, if someone is ill, which is one of the exceptions, or someone has a family emergency, um.
I, I, I think the trade-off there, if I may, I'm sorry, Mr. Bach, did I interrupt you?
No, go right ahead.
Is for the reasons you're talking about, that, you know, the shorter notice period, um, because you just mean, I know if it's an emergency situation.
I agree.
And the downside is, if we don't have enough time to establish that, the, they just won't be able to participate.
Okay.
So I mean, there's a trade-off, you can make it 48 hours, you can make it as long as you want, but I, it's, it's kind of a balancing there, so.
And they can only do this so many times, right?
Correct, time limited, exception limited.
Okay.
For council.
I'm okay with that. I'm 100% in favor of it.
Um, the only cut, question I had is, I was happy to see that we're limiting the remote connection to only three times per calendar year. My concern is, um, do we need to worry if that's three consecutive meetings or just three?
Three and 12.
In the year, I just, I mean, I don't know. We, we had something in our ordinance around absenteeism over consecutive meetings, so.
But even so, you're talking about 25% of scheduled meetings. Um, if they were to exceed that, I'd be concerned and would wonder whether they should consider resigning.
I still have some reservations about it, because if you apply to a board or a committee, I mean, I can understand you missing a few, but.
Well, that's why I was thinking if we.
This is the way of the world, so I'm gonna agree to this, but.
And, you know, this.
We saw tonight, a, a council member over the weekend planned on being here tonight, and as of yesterday, he found himself unable to be here.
He wouldn't have been able to give us 24 hours notice either.
Yeah.
Well, this doesn't apply to council, so we have to follow state.
But I mean, things happen.
Is there a, a motion, Councilman Martin?
There, there is a motion, yes.
Okay.
But I wanted some consideration to cons, three consecutive meetings, but if that, if we feel confident that that's okay, then that just means that that board member or committee member would have to serve nine consecutive meetings in person versus saying you can't do three consecutively, you can have three for the year, but you can't put them all together.
That's fine.
Then put that in your motion.
Okay, all right, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve a new, uh, ordinance change or policy change for board members.
Advisory boards.
And committee members that volunteer, that they may, uh, connect remotely to attend a meeting. But I would like to amend the, the text to say they can't be three consecutive attendance through remote connection.
I'll second that, that's fine.
Okay.
All in favor? Unanimous.
I would recommend, um, in number three, change more than three times per year, more than three, uh, well, we'll talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
But instead of times, we'll change it to meetings and make it non-consecutive.
All right, I'll make a motion to consult, to go into closed session, to consult with the town attorney to preserve any private privilege, and to discuss specific personnel pursuant to NCGS 143, 31811A36.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Yes. Jeff.
I was just making sure you were done.
Man, you were bending. I was just.
Those are hard numbers.
Whatever he said.
Exactly. Only been waiting two years.
Straight off the sheet that you approved at the budget workshop.
Your shift has come in.
Finally. I don't even know what's on there.
Doesn't, doesn't matter. We said that it'd be one.
We're back from closed session, no action was taken.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would entertain a motion to pass a resolution authorizing the town attorney to file code enforcement abas, abatement actions on the following parcels and addresses. Parcel number 235JC008, bearing address 123 Northeast 19th Street. Parcel 220NA079, bearing the address 3742 Oakwood Drive. Parcel 236EA028, bearing the address 3950 Old Bridge Road. Parcel 235IJ002, bearing the address 1406 East Oak Island Drive. Parcel 250DB048, bearing the address 26 Chopin Way. Parcel 236EA034, bearing the address 3918 Old Bridge Road. Parcel 235KL041, bearing the address 122 Northeast 37th Street. And parcel 235KM01701, bearing the address 219 Northeast 39th Street.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.